Back here from that. Oh, shoot, I don't need it.
Ooh.
Yeah, anytime after one, I'm free.
That won't work. Because we will be back any time. Tuesday. Actually, I have any afterluners.
Yeah, I call it. A lot of church books. I do read them, but kinda chatted by chat or something, you know. But a front to back.
Or a calendar.
Have you read the input?
Yeah.
Do you guys want me to start bringing healthy stuff?
So, it'll be nice.
Just as long as it's not the broccoli that we have.
I know. Leslie and I laugh when we think about bringing this broccoli. It's gonna be funny.
Lunch.
Can I go ahead and start recording Mike?
Yeah.
I'll bring Cindy.
Whoa. Did you just say that out loud?
Yeah, she'll go.
Wow.
That's on one today, apparently.
He's on one.
Hello. Hey, she gave me kudos on Facebook.
You know lots of things.
Oh, yeah.
What did you do?
How are you doing?
Doing great. Good to see you.
They voted opposite. Hey, gee, thanks.
I voted against all you guys.
You're not gonna wanna shake my hand after you hear about our bridge project.
Dude, I'm just glad you're working on something. I'm not sure it's.
No, that's the problem. It's not being.
It's not being worked on. That's the problem.
Well, what do you wanna do about it? I can complain all I want, I'm still on.
We're gonna bulldoze a road just right over the top of it.
I'll pay. I will donate that ground.
You good with that? We'll build the road.
You'll build the road. In fact, I know some equipment. We'll just go steal it from the planet.
Hey, I saw you.
Fastest built road.
And as long as they can use it, they might be good with it.
It, uh, I saw your brother come follow up. That was, he did a good job.
Okay.
Yeah.
I was gonna say, everyone was on something.
He was the sheep herder.
Yeah.
That was good.
So, um, I wanted to just have a quick work session. That's why we're starting a little later, to talk about ARPA funds and where we stand with what we've spent and where we wanna go.
Looks like we blasted them about all out.
Yeah, we've spent more than I thought, actually. I'm kinda surprised, but, um, we just gotta make sure that we spend them and spend them appropriately and prioritize whatever we've got left. So.
Well, and I think we can, well, I'll talk in a minute. As soon as I get my thoughts. I don't, I don't have, my thoughts went out the window.
So, I was trying to make sure I was reading this right. It looked like there was 1.1 million deposited in that account in November '22. And then we've spent.
All the thirty grand, about. We got thirty-three seven eleven left. Is that what I'm reading?
You know, I was trying to understand what the 2.5 at the bottom is. Is that?
Two point one?
I can tell you exactly what it is.
Is that remaining?
No.
No, I don't think that's remaining. That's why I was having a little bit of a hard time understanding what was here.
Well, the very bottom, just above that, it says remaining 2.116 million.
Total ARPA.
Okay, number one, the amount that we've received, and I sent off a something, I don't know if it was an email or a Teams, to, um, the other 1.17 million that should be there.
Yeah, the second half.
The first half. This is the second half right here. The one they're showing us on this paper is the second half.
How do you know that?
Because of the date. Eleven thirty of 2022. Okay, and twenty twenty-one.
So, the first half just isn't showing?
It's just not showing. And so I don't know where that is. I asked Leslie to look into it, and she was going to, and.
I thought I saw it on there at one time.
It was on another form, but it wasn't this. So. Okay, yeah, this is the updated one.
Oh, the updated one was sent to us today.
That's today.
At two seventeen.
But that shows, at the very bottom, total ARPA 2.5.
Oh, I, that's probably incorrect there, too, because the.
Well, is that total spent?
No.
Out of the three point?
That's what's unexpended, and I think that might include some other ARPA monies which are not ours. They're the library's. So, she made.
The library got ARPA dollars?
Yes, they did. Specific for her operation, yeah. You know, on the, on the, um, on our sheet, DocuSign that comes out every week, it will have there some times where she has gone and ordered stuff with the ARPA monies, which were her library ARPA monies. Specifically for her. And they're not county ones.
So, the county ARPA shows unexpended 699,000, but that's the one that showed 1.1 million as the revenue, and we believe there was more than that, right? Should've been double.
I'm trying to look at where you're at.
I'm looking on page two at the bottom.
Six hundred ninety-nine thousand?
Yeah.
Unexpended?
That's what it says.
But it depends on what page you're on.
Well, those are different accounts. That's why, because, see, that's the county ARPA. If you go to the page below it, it says permanent employees, and it has a fifty-seven thousand dollar expenditure there. Employee benefits, building grounds, supplies and maintenance, and then at the bottom it says total ARPA.
This is really confusing.
This is really confusing.
We should have Leslie explain it to us. If you can get her, that'd be awesome.
Just send her, just send her a Teams.
I mean, at the, in the end of the day, we just wanna know what we have left, I guess.
Right, and it's more than six hundred ninety-nine thousand.
It appears to me that the six ninety-nine is what was left after the expenditures that we've made from the 1.1. Right?
Yeah, it could be.
Robert, there's cookies.
It could be, because, uh, well, maybe, maybe not.
I've got two glasses of milk. Eat it. There's so much sugar.
Yes, that is correct. I'm pretty sure. But let's find out from her when she gets here. Because we got the. Well, I didn't think you could eat those things, Robert.
I can't. I'm just really hungry.
Okay, I'm glad to see you're normal.
Leslie, our brains can't figure this out.
Did Kimberly answer the email about the revenue?
No, she did not.
I don't think the revenue is right.
That's what we planned to say, too. Can you tell, though, so as far as what we've expended, just looking down through this, we've got several sections here. This is everything that we've supposedly expended out of it, right?
Correct.
So, the top, the accounts payable, though.
Don't worry about that.
We're not worrying about that. The temp legal, we've paid out of there. And then the county ARPA.
Yes, I remember that job.
And then the permanent employees and the employee benefits.
Yep.
And then this building supplies, grounds and maintenance.
Yep. That's everything we have spent.
So, the total we've spent there, so we could get a total.
Yes, we are doing the top stair for you. But that should be a no brainer.
My understanding is we are supposed to receive about 2.3 million.
Yes, 2.347 million.
But I don't see that.
We've only, we're only showing 1.1, half of it.
Yeah.
So, the other half is somewhere.
Somewhere.
Okay. It's the top stair, the basement stairs.
That makes sense, then. We'll just add up what we've got here and then.
Okay.
I think we were getting confused, because at the very bottom of this, where it says total ARPA, it says 2.5, but I don't think that's correct.
I don't believe that's accurate. And I'm not sure what's happening.
Do we have an idea as to how much the library received for their ARPA funds?
You're gonna have to ask Kimberly. I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know what they're seeing. I just like to spend money.
I'm glad for that. You're doing a great job of it. I really do like that. But we need to save as much as we can, too. Except for this grant. Because there's, I mean, we put in there the thirty-three thousand, which was the half of the, um, GenCon for this building. Yeah, thirty-three seven eleven. And then we spent, this is something I didn't understand, is, maybe I do. How come there's this Motorola stuff all the way along? I thought they were, I mean, because that's more than.
Eight hundred nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-six cents, according to this. They said we've spent eight hundred nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and ninety-six cents, if I add all of those up.
Okay.
And that, that seems about right from what I've talked.
I think we have everything coded right now, so I think this is accurate.
The only.
The other expenses that we've approved but have not yet hit this are employee-related still.
Turned around.
This room, the upgrade of this room, the, what was that, sixty something?
Yeah, but we've already got half of it.
I don't even know why.
Half of it's already here.
That's the GenCon, right?
Yes, GenCon.
Okay, so sixty-six thousand. Okay, so there's another thirty-three thousand for that, and then we're only a portion of the way through the year, so there's, well, we're.
I did not plan anything specific, because I laid it out.
So, the permanent employees and the employee benefits, it doesn't exactly. Probably three, right?
It's not like four.
Well, we've got also, that's not included in here, you've got the other, uh, we've dedicated six hundred thousand out of that money specifically for those three, two employees. Okay, so that we have to keep out of the equation, or we have to reduce the total amount down by that other four hundred thousand.
Well, that's what's, that's what's been paid out, this three one and the.
So, we need to know what, I mean, the total amount that paid out for the employees, those two.
Why did this conversation happen?
Uh, we need to make sure that, now, I'm kinda curious, and I haven't added it all up, on this Motorola Solutions. We only budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars for that, and it's way over that. Okay.
For radios, or?
Yeah, Motorola. So, I'm just trying to figure out if we've got everything. I think we need to go through it some more. Okay?
To me, I just, I think I'd lay it.
Know what the total amount is that we've received, if I remember right. We need to know, find out where the other half is, but I, I know the amounts expended.
So, I would've thought it would.
So, we have the amounts, we have the amounts that we've spent so far.
I mean, it is close. There's a corner there that comes within four inches of it, so.
We committed six hundred thousand towards wages.
So, I don't know why they wouldn't.
Right.
For the sheriff's department.
I think that's a JR.
We've already spent approximately, um, let's see, twenty.
Hundred thousand dollars.
Plus sixty. We've spent about eighty thousand of that already.
Which was more than what we had budgeted for.
And those were just for a full year.
Yeah, because if we've, if we've spent eighty thousand and we're only a quarter of the way into the year.
But it wasn't part of it last year.
Yeah, it's over a two-year timeframe.
Oh, you're right. This is, sorry, we're, that started clear back in August.
Yes, August, at the end of August.
Okay, so that's way more than, okay, we're, we're within where we ought to be then on that. Because that's now, August to now, we're eight months.
For the Motorola?
No.
No, for the wages.
For the wages, yeah, yeah.
Right.
Okay, so we're eight months in on that. Let me make sure.
We still.
Well, eighty thousand, we're about ten thousand dollars a month. That's what we're spending on that.
That's including benefits, right?
Times, yeah. We plan to do that for thirty-six months, right?
Right.
Oh, well, we're actually way under, right?
Yeah.
Because that's thirty-six thousand, or three hundred and sixty thousand. So, we're under on that.
That's for sheriff?
For, for the wages, yeah. But we committed up to six hundred thousand for that. If I take and add.
Where are you looking, where are you seeing that on this document?
It's not on this document. That's what we had agreed to at budget time. Was to dedicate six hundred thousand over the next three years. It was a hundred thousand roughly per officer, so two hundred thousand dollars per year for the next three years is what we dedicated for. We approved that on November ninth of 2021, actually. A long time ago. And we dedicated seventy-five thousand towards helping Garrett's office with returning expenses.
Which he said we haven't used it much.
Not too much. Maybe like thirty-four hundred or so.
Yeah, that's good.
Is it seventeen? Okay.
Yeah, so.
So, based on what I'm seeing, we've either spent or, or allocated approximately 1.4 million of this.
Of the two point.
Of the three.
Two point three million.
Two point three two. If you count the eight hundred that we've already spent, plus the six hundred that we've dedicated, plus another thirty-three that we've spent or well-spent to upgrade this room.
I don't know what your thoughts are on the rest, but I wondered how you felt about maybe doing a grant manager and using ARPA funding.
I'll tell you what.
Is that a?
That is something I'm looking into further, but our accountants slash auditor said that that is actually an approved item.
It's an approved item?
And they have, and we would have to set into some kind of a, in the contract that we do with them, or not contract, but whatever we do with them.
Yeah.
That they would have to find enough money to be able to take care of it after two years.
I'm gonna have the same feeling I had with our sheriff's department. These dollars should be for one-time use.
Right.
They should not be something that triggers.
Right.
Ongoing, because if we have too many triggers of our ongoing, all of a sudden, two years from now or three years from now, we're gonna say, okay, we gotta be paying for this stuff now.
Right.
Thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, we're gonna be raising taxes.
Yeah, that's one thought. The other thought I do have.
That's right.
Not, not disagreeing, and that's the play I've heard for many, many years, that they can pay their own wage.
And they can.
Don't, don't disagree with that. The other add that I would have is the Mountain Green's through improvement district. I know their budgets came in way high, and they qualify very, very well for these dollars. That affects a lot of residents, so. Give away four hundred thousand, and we could certainly talk about additional for like that.
Right now, I would like us to look into more of, if we have to come up with matches for broadband, for what, you know, fiber to the county. That's something we need to look at. Uh, there's a lot of things on here I would change around, and maybe, you know, we need a discussion on that.
I don't wanna give those guys any more money till they do something.
Yeah, we gave them quite a bit.
Oh, I'm not gonna give any of them any more money. I'm talking about, I'm talking about a whole different thing, so.
Where's that YCC construction project?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not talking. CJC, forty-one thousand.
Well, we did that. No, this is YCC, this. It's a great connection.
What's the YCC?
I sent that out.
It's the one I'm on the board on as a result of being on this commission.
Yeah.
Building a transitional housing facility.
Not in Mountain Green, right?
Oh, no, no. It's in Ogden.
Do we have a dollar not asked on that?
No, they haven't asked for anything more than what we, but they, but I know they're in the middle of their fundraising campaign, and if we kicked over, you know, twenty-five for that, that would.
So, we did, we agreed to the money for the CJC, right, the forty-one thousand?
Yeah.
As I recall, but I don't think it's hit yet, has it?
I don't know.
I think we've already sent it.
I don't recall seeing it when I read down through all this stuff.
It's on your sheet.
It's on her sheet?
Yeah, the one you sent me.
The one that I emailed or the one that Leslie sent?
The one that Leslie sent. Let me get back. Yeah. Let me get back to it.
I don't see it.
I saw it on one the other day.
So, that's another amount that we did.
I know, I know where the extra money's coming from. But I don't think it's ARPA money. I just saw the NACO ARPA. That's that other hundred thousand dollars that we got. Right? Maybe, maybe not. Two hundred thousand. I will look into it some more.
I don't see it.
Okay, so we're actually more like 1.5 million when I add in this other forty-one thousand, which, that we've either committed or spent, or it does.
I know Ogden City put a hundred and something thousand of their ARPA towards the YCC project.
So, should we put that on our list at least of?
Of considerations.
Considerations.
They haven't asked me for it, and I haven't told them I would get it for them, but.
Well, I still think we ought to consider ways in which we could possibly look at a grant writer or manager for all of the grants and all the, all the grants, and looking for more, because there's some more that just came out this week that we need to look at. And they're gonna have to come up with in their grant writing, a portion of that grant is gonna have to go to take care of their salary after two years, or one year. Two years, probably.
Does ClearGov qualify at all?
Might. But I don't know.
I would guess, because, um.
It's electronic.
It's an accessibility thing.
Accessibility thing.
We did for upgrading this room.
I'll, I'll continue to look on it this week since.
They ought to be able to tell us, too.
I have nighttime available.
You'd think so.
Of course, I guess it's more budgeting than.
Communication.
If they can tell us that they've seen others use it for, use ARPA dollars for this, I think we could just get some confirmation and maybe do that.
Can we have a, maybe a meeting, put it into a work session in the first of May and go through more of it and get it all defined? Because I know next time we don't have time.
Next time?
The next meeting, we don't have time.
How do you know that?
Because I already know things that are coming out next, in two weeks.
RDA discussion, I think, is what's gonna take the time.
RDA, economic development. Trails. Possibly the other one. IBI study.
We've spent way more on Motorola than we had anticipated.
That's right.
Any other items that we'd like to consider or add to our list to look at?
I don't know other than the grant writer and manager.
Do we have any idea what a cost for that would be?
Nope. We're gonna have to just look.
How many counties our size have full-time grant writers?
They actually, we're talking about, there are some out there. I don't know yet until I look, but I'll, I'll go and look.
I'd be interested to see.
Yeah.
Our, but our size, not.
Yeah. I don't mean Weaver and Salt Lake and all them, because they've got two or three of them.
Yeah.
They got more money than they need.
Yeah, we spent a hundred and eight thousand dollars on Motorola radios.
Yeah, so I'm just wondering if those were the ones that were supposed to be or not.
Budgeted seventy-five thousand.
Yeah, maybe.
That's interesting.
Is one of that for the sheriffs?
It's sheriff, fire, and EMS, it's all, emergency services.
Talk to them about it.
Okay, I'll put, I'll add on to this list, potential.
There's some more.
How does that happen?
What, do they spend more than they've got?
Yeah.
Then they're approved to spend.
Then they're approved without.
I don't know.
Obviously, they could just spend it.
Without permission.
Yeah, it shouldn't.
Purchasing manager.
I think it just needs to maybe be an email to them to say this is how much has been spent, and you went this much over your budgeted amount. Where are we gonna get it from?
You'd have to break it down.
Yeah, I don't know which is which.
Broken down by departments?
And by purpose and all that stuff?
No. We only have two departments, right, sheriffs and emergency.
You can have the two of them come in and explain. And it doesn't give us much detail here on, you know, which, which purchase was for which department.
I think there were some, there were some in here that I read. In one of them. Don't know where it's at exactly. It had to do with the, the, the two new sheriffs. They put money to bring that, their cameras and everything else into this picture here, instead of putting it through their budget.
And that shouldn't happen, because that wasn't part of the.
Oh, that's what I read in one of the reports.
So, we probably ought to ask that question.
So, in other words, we need to talk to them. All right.
We can give time for maybe Austin to give us a quick update, maybe?
Yes, we should definitely.
Okay, so Leslie, we're gonna need to make sure that we just, Kimberly, just get us that updated stuff, and then maybe we can come in and, I'll come in and look at some of these expenditures and just see what we've got going, if it's okay with them. I'll just do it any other way.
We have a number of clients who use ARPA funding for.
And then we need to get together.
There you go. Do we have a, did we get a cost?
As an auditing.
I don't remember what it was.
For all of this.
I'll, I'll forward it to you.
It wasn't a tremendous amount, as I recall.
What's that?
The ClearGov, he says that she confirmed they do have other entities that have used ARPA dollars for it, so.
Yeah.
That seems to me like a no-brainer.
For this year, it would be about seven thousand dollars. Next year.
Because it was the setup fee, right?
Yeah, because of the setup fee.
I just sent it to you, Mike. Total in advance, if you paid it all, was seventeen four.
That's per year.
Thirty-six hundred. Seventy-two fifty for the five months, and then seventeen four is the total.
So, I, I would be very supportive of doing that. I think we ought to put that on the next agenda, not to maybe get a contract from him and get it going. Anybody have objections to that?
Nope.
Nope.
Let's do it.
I've actually got the contract, if you want it.
If you've got the contract, then send it, just forward it over to Julie and have her get it on our next agenda.
Okay.
That's the ClearGov contract. Make sure Gary uses it, too, if he has one. Okay. Austin, we're gonna ask you to come give us a quick update in a minute in the meeting after we start.
Three minutes or just one?
Well, I'm saying the prayer, so it depends on how long my prayer is.
In just a few minutes. At the presentation time, I'm gonna ask you to come up. That's okay. We'll put our timer up here. Okay, just wanted to give you a heads up. All right. The hour's at hand. Let's get started. Welcome to the Morgan County Commission meeting. Today is April fourth, 2023, and it is snowing outside, for the record here. Crazy year. We will get started with an invocation or a moment of reflection and a pledge of allegiance and I've asked Commissioner Anderson to take care of that.
Our heavenly Father, we're very grateful. We're grateful this day for the moisture that we've received. We're grateful for the amount that we have gotten and for the many dry years we've had in this state. We're grateful for what we have received. We ask thee that as these flows come down, that we do our best as residents, as county employees to know what we need to do to help mitigate the flooding that will occur. We are grateful for the water, but we also need to make sure and manage it as best as we can. We are grateful for the opportunity that we have to meet as a government. We're grateful that we have the government that we have for the wars and that have been fought, for those that have served for us, for, for our freedoms that we enjoy today. We're very grateful for that. We're grateful for this beautiful valley we live in. We're grateful for the those who are participating in the meeting tonight, taking their time to be here. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please arise and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance, I command.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. We will move into our consent items. We have one item this evening and that is the review and approval of the March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three meeting minutes. Are there any updates to the minutes that have not been provided to Julie previously?
I just have one, if I can get back to it. It was on. Okay, on page ten of our packet. Would've been number four, page four of the agenda, I mean of the minutes. Says there are a few changes needed. Brett Heiner should be listed as a Public Works Director, Director. We need to change that from Brett Heiner does not need to be on there. You just need to have the Public Works Director.
Okay.
Okay? So Brett Heiner's name because he won't be here after, when he retires. So we just need to make sure that's changed, is put to Public Works Director.
On page five, or I guess page six, item five? In, in the motion on, yeah, Legacy Hill subdivision, phase two? Where it just says set forth in the fire district's letter pertaining to instead of sprinkler residences, will you say the fire sprinkled residences?
Fire sprinkled?
Yes.
Or suppression. Isn't that what it is? Fire sprinkled suppression? Systems?
Yeah, that, that would be fine. I mean, I guess it would be fire suppression systems within the residences.
That would be the best way of saying it.
Okay, any other updates for the minutes?
Uh, just on my commissioner comments. So Jim Hill dug call in the morning regarding Snow Basin and, and just put and the club of med announcement. Thank you.
And then on the next item, I mean the same commissioner comments, under Commissioner Wilson. Uh, it says he wants to X the fire ladder truck and work on more on permanent employees. You've got that. He wants to X the fire ladder truck and work on permanent employees for the department. Just take out that on.
Did anyone have any corrections on the, all the people that were in attendance that night? I have the hardest time reading their names. And I don't know who it was.
Didn't look at the names.
I didn't either.
I couldn't figure out who it was.
Ed Schultz? Ed Schultz.
He didn't, he didn't make a public comment.
Yeah, he didn't make a comment. Let me see if I can find him. You say there was an Ed? The man comment.
And then Brett, Brett Anderson, I didn't know his wife's name, I put Mrs. And then I didn't know his son's name. But I was trying to figure out everybody that was here.
I don't know.
A lot of people don't sign up.
Yeah, if they don't sign the list, they may not get on the thing here and that's okay. Okay. That looked for a motion to approve the amended March twenty-first, twenty-twenty-three meeting minutes.
Salute.
Second. You have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, motion passes, thank you. All right. Commissioners declarations of conflict of interest with any items on tonight's agenda.
None.
Okay, perfect. Seeing none, we will move on to our public comment period. This is an opportunity for the public to address the commission on any items that you'd like to address us on. Go ahead and open that public comment period.
Do you want Austin during this time or not?
We'll have him come up after the public comment period. During presentations. He's not public. He's employee.
Wow. Wow.
Well, maybe he wants to address us in the public.
So it's your business.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close our public comment period and we will move to a brief presentation. We're gonna ask for an update from our county emergency manager. It's been a record-breaking year. Continues to be a record-breaking year through tonight at least. So, Austin, you wanna tell us where we're at and where we're going?
So, um, I'm gonna use this as a practice run because Channel Four News is coming up to interview me tomorrow about it. So if you guys wanna ask me some hard questions, that'd be great. It can be a good practice for tomorrow. I was in a meeting yesterday with Weaver Basin, the Bureau of Reclamation, and the National Weather Service. And I know, Mike, you said that it's a record-breaking year. Glenn Merrill at the National Weather Service said he went back through history to see if he could find a matching year like this. There isn't one. During the eighties, it's worse than that. Fifty-two, it doesn't compare. I was pretty optimistic thinking the fifty-two floods, they didn't have Rockport Reservoir during the fifty-two floods, but the snowpack and the way it's all set up, they're letting out a lot of water. And so one thing that a lot of people in Morgan have moved in in the last few years and they've never seen the river with water in it. They've always seen drought levels or irrigation levels where they bring them up for people to irrigate. They've never seen water that's a normal runoff here. So right now, what Weaver Basin is doing is, is they're doing their best to lower every reservoir they can. They've got it just below flood stage and it will stay that way for the foreseeable future. Um, in talking with Weaver Basin, especially up in the Hardscrabble area, luckily, the, the average peak is March twenty-seventh and then the snow starts to melt out. Well, that's eighteen point six inches of water in Hardscrabble. Right now, it's at forty-plus inches and still climbing. So luckily, you get at least a little bit more of a storm than, than a warm-up. But the plan is, is to run all of our streams at just below flood stage as long as we can.
Okay, so that's what you mean by just below flood stage is the rivers are running?
The rivers are running high on purpose.
Yeah, and I, I was noticing the flow in the Weaver River.
They're, they're pretty good. Right now, the flow going down from Gateway down to Mountain Green, down through the canyon is just below two thousand cubic feet per second. In nineteen fifty-two, that number was seven thousand eight hundred cubic feet per second. In eighty-three, it was about five thousand. And there was one point in eighty-three where the water was so deep that it came out of Horseshoe Bend and crossed the westbound lanes going down the canyon. So the state is prepared. We're meeting tomorrow.
The westbound lanes of the highway as it's presently constituted?
Yeah.
Yes.
The freeway.
Wow.
That's a lot of water.
That's a lot of water.
That's, that, that is an awful lot of water. And that was half of what it was in fifty-two. So we're I've been talking to the state a lot. Uh, I just ordered another forty thousand sandbags. They should be getting here in the next week or so. Geneva, they just offered free sand to counties and cities. So we've already ordered, we've already distributed out eighteen dump truck loads of sand. And all the sand from here on out, we're just gonna truck it in from Geneva since they're giving us free sand. Last night, I was up in the Hardscrabble area. Um, it was coming down through the snow and I went out and was waist-deep in snow water. We were able to get it channeled back in to go into a culvert. And so we've been able to mitigate some of that. There's some flow issues up there that we're gonna need to do some redesigning of the road and the sides of the road so that we can handle some of the flow issues in the future. I, the state gave us the opportunity to kind of throw out a quick wish list and I told them we needed eighteen thousand dollars to do some mitigation work on Hardscrabble Road and they approved that. And I also told them it'd be nice if we had a mini excavator. And the state has approved us seventy thousand dollars to go towards a mini excavator. Between now and the next meeting, I would like to get that nailed down and see if we can't get that acquired sooner rather than later. But I've been talking to Commissioner Wilson today after we got the final-ish approval. We'll get the final approval tomorrow and we'll start moving forward on that. One other thing I've thought about is up at the Croydon Bridge, Wadsworth Brother has one-ton sandbags. And so I would like to be able to acquire about fifty one-ton sandbags. They'll take either a front-end loader or an excavator to move. Another thing we're looking at using are the Jersey barriers up at the fairgrounds. If we have to, we're gonna put that KREL in, whatever we have to do to mitigate losing any roads or anything like that. I don't think it's quite time to panic yet. We've still got a few more weeks before it starts to get super serious. But it's it's inevitable at this point.
Austin, remind us, you and I talked a little bit about this, the typical timing of floodings in the previous years. I mean, we're, we're kinda comparing this to eighty-three and fifty-two because those were the, the heaviest flood years. But maybe just talk a little bit about when that flooding is likely to occur because I think a lot of folks, once they see that the water's gone from their, from their flower beds and their lawn, they think, okay, we're in the clear.
Well, some of the issues is, and some of the people who've, who've lived here for a significant amount of time, I personally don't recall this amount of snow on the valley floor at this time of the year.
I will tell you from being here for that long and during that timeframe, I have never, ever in my life seen snow on the ground at this time of the year in my yard.
Correct.
Or on my farm, either one.
And so the thing is, is right now, um, I was down in Peterson last night at about eight o'clock at night. Between eight and nine o'clock, we were meeting with some, some individuals down there concerned that the river's coming out of its bank. Actually, I was able to figure it out today. It wasn't the river coming out of the bank, it was just the general snow melt of the area. And so once we get all of this melted out, so we have to deal with this flooding first and then we'll have about a three-week reprieve. And so in eighty-three, not that you can compare this year to eighty-three, but the Althalfa and the Barley was about a foot tall. Eighty-three, I got pulled out of school the last week of school to help sandbag my parents' home. And so realistically, we're looking at the end of May, first part of June, when we get the snow melted out. And I think this is probably gonna be the year that there's gonna be snow staying in the mountains all year long. So. So we're talking, we got a month, month and a half before the real bad floods come.
Austin?
Yeah.
At the weather report this week?
Yeah.
We're supposed to be sixty degrees.
Monday?
No, sixty degrees this week.
Yeah, Monday. So it, the, the hot, the, the daytime high temperature doesn't concern me, concern me nearly as much as the nighttime lows. If we can't have that, if it doesn't cool off enough that it quits flowing, then that's when we've really gotta be concerned. Now, having said that, they also, the, the news wants to also go over to the fire department. We have a pump trailer over there that has sixteen different types of pumps ready to go and the hose and everything to match it. So if, if a neighborhood does have the need, we do have the capacity. Everything from a three-quarter inch garden hose style pump that you can put down in window wells all the way up to four-inch pumps. We have four-inch trash pumps that can move an awful lot of water. That's not including some of the pumps they have on their trucks as well. So we're doing our best to try and get as much equipment as we can get ready, ready so that when the need comes, we are prepared. And so I'm sure you've seen on your check edit list, it's never-ending stuff that we're, we're getting in preparation for this. Last night, up in Hardscrabble, the, the community, the ward up there, they ended up putting out a thousand five hundred sandbags is what they estimated. So I replaced their thousand five hundred with two thousand five hundred. And so we took two more dump truck loads of sand up to the church house up there and they're gonna fill those sandbags in preparation for this weekend with the sixty-degree daytime highs.
So is that, are they putting the sandbags along the road or where are they putting it?
Um, a lot of those went to divert it off of the road and get it going into East Canyon Creek and not directly into this person's house.
Austin, I got a few comments.
Sure.
So I, I guess versus we, we know it's gonna flood, so.
Yeah.
Do we have, first of all, would we be willing, and I don't know if we would do this or not, where we would have a contact number maybe on our webpage? Do we want to do that?
The fire department's put my personal cell phone number out there.
Are you okay with that?
It's too late now.
I guess the thought, I guess the thought would be, do we have a response system of some sort? Where, because I, I could see at any weekend or any time when flooding is happening, you have a subdivision that floods, you have twenty people that wanna call the county to say, I'm having issues. Do you want to be that number or?
Like I said, in, in tongue-in-cheek, it's too late now. The three numbers they generally call are myself, the fire department, or Brett. And so we all coordinate together. This afternoon, we had a complaint about a stream down by Gordon Creek. And while I was on my way to deal with that, I called Brett and Brett was talking about another stream that someone had called him. And so.
So I guess the thought I have between you, or those three numbers?
Yeah.
Is maybe we create a mechanism where people can, if they just get on the website, it just says, hey, for flooding concerns. I, I don't know if we wanna go that far or not, but that might not be a bad idea.
I, I know that, that what I've been doing is I've talked to some of the, the members of the community, of the stakes and all of their main emergency coordinators.
Okay.
All, all call me on, on a almost daily basis.
Okay.
And so I coordinate with them and I tell them if there's, they have. And so, I coordinate with them and I tell them if there's, they have any need in their, in their areas to just call me anytime. And I know Brett's been getting those same calls. I don't think he gets quite the volume I do, but.
Okay, that's just something.
On my day off, I was averaging about fourteen calls an hour.
Just something to think about. And then, I think we oughta at least, and I don't know, maybe it's, um, a given, but if people are gonna flood, I think we can mention to them, get, get your stuff from your basement upstairs.
And that was the conversation I had last night with the people down in Peterson.
Yeah, and then, and then septics, there's a, there's a few subdivisions that I know have come in and that water will get high enough that they won't be able to use their septic, so.
And we discussed that.
They need to be aware of that.
Yep, we had that discussion.
And I hate to say this, but I, I, I'm sure there's a handful of people that just think their sewer's gonna work fine when it's flooding.
And it's not.
So.
Yeah, there was one lady last night jokingly said, I, so you're telling me I can ride my jet skis on the road? And I said, yeah, probably.
Maybe.
It might be a very likely scenario.
So, do we need to like hire anybody on a part-time basis to help with following?
That was gonna be my next question. Do we need to have somebody? Cause here's the thing, while you've been handling it, if we get, when we get into a real active flood situation, that phone's gonna be ringing constantly and you're gonna be trying to direct work. I don't think that's a good use of your time to be answering the phone, trying to calm people down when you're trying to direct the work. So, we probably need to have a plan in place and I don't know whether that's hiring somebody or we direct some other office staff here to help with that. I feel like when it is active flooding, it's gonna be all hands on deck. And I hope I get a call and I'm down there filling sandbags.
Oh, plan on it. No, you're not gonna be filling sandbags.
Well, whatever you need us to do, if, if you need us to come and jump in and help direct in, in certain areas, you and Brett and, and Boyd are wonderful, but you can't be in every part of the county at once. So, we're probably gonna have to divide and conquer. Um, my thought on that is maybe let's, let's set a, a meeting with us and you and Brett and Boyd. I know Boyd's out of town right now. Even if we have to do it remotely, we can do it, we can do it remotely.
Yeah, he'll be back Friday, so.
Let's have a discussion and come up with a plan so that we all know what's expected. And if that's, if you say you're assigned this area and you're assigned that area and we're gonna send some phone calls to you, or if we need to grab some office staff and have them help with phone calls. This isn't long-term, but it is gonna be
I suppose not.
A major problem for a short time period, hopefully.
So, when you had those kind of flood levels in the river in the eighties, what about the lower-lying lands along the river corridor? I mean, it gets narrow there, so the volume's gonna push up.
Sure.
But as it's, before it gets to the canyon, like, I mean, there's some residential subdivisions that have been built and some lands that aren't super high above that river.
Sure, well, let's just, the, the last time we really had some, some significant flooding was two thousand eleven. And what Morgan City really dealt with was there is a portion of Morgan City that had subwater. So, it didn't necessarily, you can't sandbag for that because it didn't come across the ground. It came in the ground. And so, the hard part about that is a lot of times FEMA and your flood insurance won't cover subwater. And so, that was a big concern. There's, and a lot of those people, the mayor, as I've had meetings with the mayor, he always asked them, okay, so you flooded in two thousand eleven, did you put in a sub pump? And he says, unfortunately, the overwhelming answer is, no, I didn't. And so, I know some of the people did. So, some of these low-lying areas that you're talking about, even Morgan City, where they aren't technically, they don't have to sandbag and worry about the river, they're still gonna have some subwater come up. And so, that, uh.
There will be homes that get flooded.
There's, there's really, there's really no way to mitigate that. And so, unfortunately, there's gonna be some places that we can mitigate ground, we can mitigate water flowing across the top of the ground, but I, I don't think there's a way to.
Only to a point, though, some of these areas are probably.
You're right.
I mean, I don't wanna tell people we're gonna save you, cause there's gonna be situations where we can't, there's nothing we can do about it. And no amount of sandbags are gonna solve the problem.
And that's kinda, that was where the discussion led down in, in the Peterson area I was in last night is, yeah, it's probably gonna flood in your.
Well, and I, I think we need to let them know too, and maybe in this meeting we're gonna have soon is just, get, get the word out there of what you can do, right? Be prepared, for those that are in low-lying areas and you have septics, be prepared. And your septic will not, you can't use it. So, you're gonna have to be prepared for that for a period of time.
And, and that's exactly.
Those kind of.
Is that because it fills with the subdrain?
Yeah, with the, yeah, exactly.
So, there's no water.
So, it has no volume to take anymore.
And, and realistically, I, I know where all you guys live, but I don't know your intricacies of your homes. And so, it's something that I can't do. Everybody has to, to do some of their own stuff. Because, you know, what, what Commissioner Fackrell has go on at his house is not the same as Commissioner Newton or Commissioner Wilson. And so, all of us need to do our own part for our own homes. And we're just here to support that. And we've gone through an awful lot of sand. And there's a lot of members in the community that have purchased a lot of sandbags and, and luckily, they're sharing with their neighbors. And I, I'm really pleased to see that. It's not like the whole hoarding toilet paper during COVID, you know? Morgans, I, I tell you guys, we live in a great place. Because the problems we have here are different than the problems they have in some of the other counties. Some of the other counties, their, their biggest concern is, is how are we gonna fill our sandbags? And I am not worried about that one bit. Because I make a couple phone calls and I hand the right guy a thousand sandbags and he makes a couple phone calls and there's a whole bunch of teenagers there to fill sandbags. That's the amazing thing about living in Morgans. You make the right two or three phone calls, you got more help than you know what to do with. And I just, if we can all just deal with it as it comes.
How are some of the other tributaries, rivers that are not really named or anything like that, like up East Canyon, um, other than Hardscrabble? What's that?
They're not, they're not metered. So, you kinda have to take the ones that are metered, like up in Lost Creek. They have a snow tell at Lost, at, right by the reservoir. Then they have one in Killfoil. Then they have one up at, Logan, what is it, Horse Ridge?
Horse Ridge.
Horse Ridge. And so, the one in Killfoil, it looks like Jack and the freaking Beanstalk. It's just straight up. Same thing with Hardscrabble. Um.
So, just.
Smith Morehouse is climbing like that. Trial Lake isn't, though, so.
To add on to that, at our board meeting at Weber Basin last week, the, one of the trustees asked, what's the biggest concern area in, in the areas that Weber Basin deals with anyways? And it was East Canyon.
Yeah, right now.
With the watershed coming into East Canyon and how much snow is up there, their biggest concern with modeling is East Canyon Creek, actually. Well, Creek, however you pronounce it.
But, but, um, how many of you guys have driven up over sixty-six and sixty-five? If, if you drive up there today, the, the barbed wire fence that's yay tall.
Oh, yeah, it's covered.
It disappears. It disappears for stretches, the, it's just, so, it's just snow. And we're first part of April. Yeah, good team.
And I just got a notice that two hours ago, they had another winter, a winter warning, winter storm warning.
Yeah.
For here.
But I, I do agree with Chair on, on setting up this meeting and just making sure we get the best information we can out to the public, so.
Austin, do you mind setting that meeting and just invite us?
If we can, I'd, I'd like to invite, um, the, the fire chief for, from Mountain Green.
Yeah.
And also the fire representative from Wasatch Peaks.
That'd be great.
Just one last thing that, that doesn't deal with flooding, but during our, uh, during the avalanche we dealt with, I just wanna let you guys know that the second phone call I got, the first one was from the sheriff. He called and wanted to make sure that I was on my way. The second phone call I got was from Wasatch Peaks. They, the head of their ski patrol called and said that they were getting a team ready and to give me the coordinates and they would fly their team in to help us search. And then, I got a call after that from the Back Country Rescue from Alta. They called and said Wasatch Peaks gave us a heads up. We're getting a team together, ready, and we will fly our team in to help you guys search. Um, luckily, it was in a position and, and, and the thing that we didn't have to utilize those resources. But they were very quick on the phone and offering basically unlimited resources. Whatever we needed, they were willing to provide.
Awesome.
That's amazing.
It is amazing.
That's great.
So.
Now is when we need our Hagland, right?
One thing at a time, we're working on the mini X.
Next, we need a helicopter.
No, and back to that, if the state's gonna match seventy, man, we need to get on, we need to jump on now.
I would, we will.
That'll cover the vast majority.
Lion's portion of it, yeah. I think I went well past my three minutes.
No, you're, you're great. We didn't limit you to three minutes.
Time's up, Austin, time's up.
This is important stuff we gotta figure out, so. If you'll set a call.
Yeah.
We'll.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
We haven't even, we've been here an hour.
He's got the same feeling I did. I think that's enough sugar to last me for two weeks. And I only eat half.
I only eat half, too.
I'll eat when I get done. I'll go home and have horse milk.
All right, we're gonna move to our action items. Commissioner Wilson, we'll step back in here in just a minute. We'll let, uh, our ag commissioner get set up here.
Commissioner and deputy commissioner.
And deputy commissioner. Kelly, welcome. Good to see you again.
Yeah, good to see you.
Thank you, Jeremy.
All right, it's good to be here with you. I appreciate the opportunity to spend a little bit of time. Kelly and I are traveling throughout the state. Basically, um, this is a, a campaign to help county commissioners, county council members, uh, understand the importance of agriculture in your county. Uh, the data that we're going to present is, is all county-specific. And I'm not sure, I don't know you well enough to know your occupations, but I think you're probably all tied pretty close to agriculture here in, in Morgan County. And, uh, so, I think, uh, what I'm going to do is start out, let's see. Just a little bit of background about the, uh, about the Department of Agriculture and Food. We, we were created back in, uh, nineteen twenty-one by the state legislature and, and the department oversees, um, dozens of legislative mandated programs that, that we, uh, that we work with. Looks like we're gonna have to. So, like I say, uh, we want to make you aware of some changes in the legislature that happened this last session. But some of the things that we do, the responsibilities we have, we have stewardship over agriculture in the state. Uh, we do inspections, regulation, consumer protection, rulemaking, loan assistance, pest and disease control, marketing and economic development. And there are a lot of subsets under, under all those things. So, our divisions, we've got the Office of the Commissioner, Deputy Commissioner. We also include our Legislative Affairs Director in that office, our Public Information Officer. Uh, we have an Administrative Services Office that takes care of our financing and keeps, keeps, uh, us in budget, basically. Our Animal Industry Conservation, our Grazing Improvement Program is the, the newest, uh, division that we've got. We've also got a laboratory that, that analyzes things like our cannabis. We, we oversee the medical cannabis program, meats, milk, other food products that we have to, that we have to test, make sure they're, they're safe for the public. Also, marketing and economic development, as I mentioned, the medical cannabis and industrial hemp program and, uh, plant industry and regulatory services. So, Kelly's gonna talk about our strategic goals. We, uh, did a strategic plan here for our hundredth anniversary.
Thanks for having us up here today. We appreciate, uh, coming up to Morgan and seeing all the snow and hearing what you guys all have to go through, so. But last summer, we, uh, toward the state of Utah, we did about eight different meetings where we worked, uh, we had invited elected officials. We also invited all the stakeholders, all the ag producers in those areas. And we wanted to hear from them of what ag means to them and see their vision of the future of agriculture. And this helped us come up with some goals, um, for a strategic plan when Commissioner Butters came on. And some of the goals that we had in place was agrostructure. Agrostructure is your meat processing, your vegetable and fruit processing. As we all saw during COVID and then as we see today, it takes a year, year and a half to get your, your meat harvested and, and processed. Um, so we wanna try to increase that. And we, uh, we'll go through some programs that will help us, um, try to enhance that process. During this last session, um, there was what was called an agri-park, about nine million dollars. It will be a big agrostructure park down south of Nephi. And what that will do, that nine million will help us, um, build the infrastructure, sewer and water, and hopefully enhance some big meat processors to come into the state of Utah. Um, that nine million is just to kinda seed money. Um, but we hope this, uh, we're doing feasibility studies now to see if there is water and sewer in that area so that, cause that's the challenge, you bring in a big meat processor into cities or in counties, nobody wants that smell in their neighborhood, right? So, um, Neef, south of Nephi, close to the freeway and close to railroad. We hope that we can do something down there in the center of the state to help, um, have more processing in different type of ag businesses.
Are the ranchers losing a lot of calves with this weather?
Oh, yeah, it's, some areas are close to forty percent is what we're hearing, so. Um, it's been, it's been brutal. So, and, and while we're on that, just make sure you tell all your ag producers to take good, um, documentation on their losses, cause we're working on some ways to help them get relief for that, so. The workforce, uh, is a challenge. Not only is ag producers, the average age is sixty-five. We're, we're not seeing a lot of new farmers get into the industry and, and that's our goal as a, a department, is we gotta make it profitable, right? Or we're not gonna get new, um, farmers in the industry. But also the workforce, to have people work on farms is very challenging. Um, there's, uh, H2A programs that the cost continues to go up and we're not seeing a lot of, uh, teenagers and them wanting to work on farms. So, we're trying to find ways to, to help show that it's a, a great industry. But all of us wanna come back to the farm once we've been away for a month. So, we just gotta get that love back into agriculture.
Kelly, did you say that Logan's sixty-five? Is that what I heard you say?
He's only forty-five. And I'm over the sixty-five.
And the big one, um, that we're, even in rural areas, it was amazing to see the top goal was, we gotta protect ag land, ag preservation. Um, this session, and we'll talk about it here in a little bit, you, counties that don't have more than fifty percent public land will now have to take their rollback taxes and take twenty percent of that and it will go towards conservation easements. But I'll talk about that more. But we just wanna preserve ag land, make sure, we, we just got back from Israel and it was amazing that Israel builds in the hills and they keep the ag land preserved. Um, we've done the opposite. And, and I think we're gonna regret it someday. So, we're just asking, uh, as the commissioners, to really make sure you're doing all you can to preserve ag land and, and build areas that make sense. But someday, we're gonna regret building the last crop of homes on that land, so. Uh, the food supply chain, uh, again, during COVID, we saw how devastating and how disrupted the food chain got. Um, we're just gonna try to find, like I said, with the agri-park and agrostructure, is find ways to make sure. ways to make sure that we help people sell their local food and be able to not have that supply chain disrupted like it did during COVID. That was scary to go to the grocery store and see it empty, but it can be disrupted really quick, so. And then education. Last session, we helped get a vet school at Utah State, some other areas to help get people into agriculture. The vet school is a very good opportunity for local Utahs to go to Utah State and get the vet program. We also got, this session, we got a vet school loan repayment. So if any of your kids or grandkids want to go to vet school and they go work in rural areas, they can get up to $100,000 of their loan repayment through a program that we got this session. So we're excited about that. And then customer service. Obviously, we promote agriculture, but we also regulate it, so we're kind of the good cop and bad cop. However, we want to make sure that we provide the best customer service to our ag producers. And if you hear anything that we could do better, we want you to let us know because we want all of our inspectors, all of our brand inspection, all of our meat inspectors to be partners with the ag people. And it's important to us to have good customer service. That was a good goal that we got from our strategic plan.
So some of the benefits of agriculture in the state, of course, we provide food and fiber to citizens and feed for our animals. We strengthen the local food security that we've talked about. We create rural jobs and, you know, a lot of people want to live in rural areas, but we've got to have jobs that will keep them there and allow them to be successful there. We do have a governor right now that really has focused on rural business growth and rural economic growth. Conservation and open space preservation, we've talked a little bit about that. Agriculture is a large economic driver in our rural areas. We're a public lands state and a lot of our agriculture comes from being able to utilize those public lands to graze cattle. Our beef industry is the largest industry in the state, agricultural industry in the state. And also we provide water for wildlife and other issues through our streams, our canals. We disperse that water and that helps with the wildlife population. So at a glance, your county produces about $17,129,000 of market value ag products that are sold. And I think, I think Logan, you probably produce about half that, though. 372 farms, 242,000 acres of farmland. The average farm size is 652 acres, which is a 14% decrease from 2012. We see a lot of people who live in rural areas that want to have five or 10 acres and that's probably all the farms. So our farm size, we see this throughout the state, is decreasing. The acres irrigated, about 9,023, and that's 4% of the land that is in farming. And 97% of farms in Morgan County are family-owned farms. You can see there, the percentage of livestock, that's a big deal here in the county.
So is irrigated, is sprinkler included in irrigated?
Yeah, that would be all irrigation.
So are the crops principally alfalfa?
Most likely, I'd say.
And there's probably some grains.
Yeah. We haven't got that split out. You know, we do have some information here about, you rank second in the state as far as other animals and animal products. I believe you probably still have, this is 2017 data, so we might have some differences here. But 2%, your number two in the state is for other animals and animal products. Not sure if you still have meat here in the county, but I know you had probably at that time. Horses, ponies, mules, burrows, donkeys, you're number five. And number five with the sheep, goats, more mohair and milk. So the market value of ag products sold about, and that's, those two numbers are probably in the thousands, should be, yeah, it should be 2.4 million and 14 million there, so. The data that we get from USDA, NAST, you know, it's in the thousands. And so that's, that figures not correct there, but crops and acres, your, this answers your question, your alfalfa and other types of hay, and barley for grain and corn for side of your fruit chump.
We don't have any poultry farms here in this county, so how come that's on there? Are they talking about home poultry?
Oh, I think it probably, it includes livestock, poultry and those crops, so.
Yeah, it could be your backyard.
Probably.
Okay.
Yeah, it could be.
I gave you my poultry farm a couple of years ago.
I know you did, and I still have them.
Counter the blessing if you don't have any poultry because AVN compliance has been really a tough thing on the industry here in the state. So new programs that we got here in the, at the department this year, I believe the water optimization, is that the next one, Kelly?
I'll go through.
You do yours first.
Okay. So last session, two sessions ago, we started a pilot program of $1 million. What it was, was a grant program, 50-50 match, no cap of the amount, but what we were trying to do was enhance meat processing, food and vegetable processing. So any processor was eligible for it and what it was for equipment or refrigeration, anything to help them do more. And that was a criteria, whatever, they got ranked higher if it allowed them to do more processing. It was a very successful program. We actually got 72 applicants of 14 million in requests for $1 million. So it was hard to rank projects, but the next slide kind of shows the projects that we did throughout the state. We tried to spread it out as quickly, as much as we could and get a good rate of return. This session, we got another $1 million. So we'd love for you guys to spread the word, any processors eligible. May 1st through May, the end of May will be the application period. June 1st, we'll rank them and then the funding will be available July 1st.
So have we had a producer, I mean, a person that wants to do that contact you yet?
Because we have, two weeks ago, we had a meeting with the US, I mean, your department
supposed to have had. I just want to make sure that you've got that covered.
I'm not sure if they've contacted us or not.
Okay.
Have them do so as well. After this meeting, we'll send you an email, a follow-up email that has links to all these programs that you can share as well to any. But we're excited about that program and Commissioner will talk about water optimization and they have a video and this is that million dollar thing if it works, so.
The hardest boss that anybody could ever have. There's no mercy. Probably half of my time is spent trying to use the water as efficiently as possible. Lose $200,000 year after year, you know, it's tough, so.
We've had more dry years than wet years and I think that's become the normal. The land is drier, the rainforest is drier, springs are, that we could usually count on being there are drying up, so it's a scary time.
The department right now is in the process of working through our agricultural water optimization program and this is a way that we can help farmers and ranchers use their water more efficiently. If the opportunity is presented, farmers and ranchers want to get better with the resources they have.
They're reaching out to producers and reaching out to other individuals saying, hey, look, here's what we're up against, here's what we're facing, how can we overcome this?
The Department of Ag is always their bag to move up.
Change and conservation and best practices are changing and evolving and I am very willing to evolve with them. With the help of UDAF and NRCF, we've been able to adapt those practices more quickly. With the limited availability of water by increasing the efficiency, even on these drought years, we may be able to farm nearly all of our acres. And so without some help from the state, I wouldn't be able to do this.
No one knows better than us the finite resources that we have here, so I don't think there's anyone that could care more about the land and its health and the balance than the people that are living on it and working on it. It's the lifeblood. We all understand what water is, our lifeblood. We do our best to conserve it and use it wisely because without it, we're nothing.
Okay, so our water optimization program, that's a pretty good explanation of what it does, but we work with individual ag producers to make improvements. We've administered over 50 million across 276 projects since 2019. Projected water savings of 172,000 acre feet annually, and that's a projection because not all these projects are completed. So the next round of applications will open in April. We did get another $200 million of funding through the state legislature this year. So this is going to be a program that we will be administering for the next several years, get that money out on the ground and do projects that will work to help farmers and ranchers operate more efficiently with the water they have.
So why aren't they pushing a little more for sprinkler irrigation rather than flood irrigation? Like up here, seems like this end of our valley, sprinklers. This end of our valley floods.
Yeah. And that's what the intent is, to try and incentivize the farmers and ranchers to move from flood irrigation to sprinkler irrigation.
And so they're giving them grants for sprinklers and things like that?
Yeah, it's a 50-50 match, but the federal government through some of their programs can also meet the farmer's match requirement. So, and then there's an in-kind, they can do in-kind work and.
Up to 500,000, so.
That's not going to cover much.
Yeah, and you can do it in phases as well.
As I say, because that won't cover anything.
And it also includes.
Well, what does one pivot cost? A hundred and something grand?
Probably around that. I know the last one I was involved in ag about eight years ago, we were paying about $70,000, so it's probably gone since then. But, yeah, and doing things like piping canals or lining ditches, things like that, things that result in a more efficient use of water. Another program that we got, we've got a $500,000 grant from USDA to offer assistance for ag stress-related problems that our producers see. So, you know, ag is one of the most at-risk industries for mental health challenges and suicide and what this program does is provides free mental health care vouchers that can be used towards receiving counseling or help through intermountain health care. We brought some information, we'll leave that on the table back here, that you can distribute in your county. And we're also doing training for producers in the community that can help their neighbors or, you know, help founding members when they need help. And we also train 988 crisis line responders. And this is, this is a partnership, I need to emphasize, and we're in partnership with USU Extension on this program and they're doing a great job. As we don't have look at the acreage that is being developed right now, much of this acreage that I never thought I would see developed in my lifetime. A lot of farmers go out there and they talk about the development and they say, you know, those houses are the last crop that is ever going to be planted out there on that property.
When you have a place that has importance like this, you kind of want to have it last and the conservation easement is the way to do it.
Conservation easement is essentially an agreement between a private landlord and a nonprofit or a state or a federal agency to limit the amount of development that takes place on a piece of property. Essentially what you're doing is you are purchasing the right to develop on that piece of property.
Working with the state and the nature conservancy and the easement, we're really helping to protect a massive area of land that's critical for winter range, for migratory corridors, and it's really a special thing to know, you know, my kid can come back after I'm gone and be like, oh, wow, this is still the same, this still looks the same.
There is an inch on my either side that I have gathered the rock up, turned over the soil, so instead of being an investment, it now becomes part of my soul.
The protection of land utilized for agricultural production is one of the major goals that we have at the Department of Agriculture and Food. And if we go in and preserve that land and we utilize it for the production of food and for other resources, we become sustainable as a state.
Deciding to do a conservation easement on our ground was kind of a tough decision. I mean, we looked at it and, you know, the money situation is very different whether you sell your land or whether you put it into a conservation easement. At the end of the day, we had to kind of look ourselves in the mirror and say, what's more important, our heritage, who we are, what we love doing, or money? And ultimately, we decided that, you know what, it was worth the sacrifice to give up a little bit to be able to have the opportunity to do what we love.
As they come, they know now that this property's been remained open, that it will never be built on, and what a great legacy to leave our community.
So the Lee Raymond Callister Fund's been in place since 1992, but last session, they moved it to the Department of Ag to really focus on ag land preservation. It gets one-time funding here and there. We haven't been able to get ongoing funding for it, but it is a very important program. This session, we did get $3 million for it and also three full-time employees to really help administer easements throughout the state. Your county now with the rollback taxes will be, you'll take 20% of it and do easements within your county. And I don't know if you're set up to do easements or not, but we would love for you to work with our program that we've established and help us do easements in your county, match our funds, and then we go and match it within our CF funds and also with nonprofit and private funds as well to do these easements. Just like the video said, a lot of people do want to keep their farms in ag land for their families, but there's a lot of pressure to sell and there's good money to sell, obviously. This will help buy those building rights and put it into an easement. They'll be able to own the land still, they'll still be able to sell the land, but it will always be ag land going forward. So we're excited about this program and we're still, again, we'll continue to fight for funding for it, but again, if we continue to build on it, we're going to regret it. I really think we are. A lot of ag land is being built on and this program will help us to preserve that, so.
So are you, are you seeking to then fund the acquisition of the easement, right?
Yes.
That's what you're doing?
Yeah, that's what we're doing. So they'll work with an appraiser to come up with that value of what those building rates are and they'll purchase that and put it into an easement.
And the $3 million is statewide?
Statewide, but your 20% has to stay within your county. So we, you know, if it goes through our ranking committee and it's ranked, well, you can match your 20% with ours, so.
And what are you looking for in terms of your prioritization of projects that you're going to fund?
It's in agriculture, but, you know, all the space and recreation can also qualify it. The main emphasis is on productive agriculture. The main emphasis is on productive agricultural land and keeping that in production. And we all know that, you know, a block of land here in agriculture may be a block somewhere else. You've got to have a large enough block of agricultural land that you can still support the businesses that support the producers. Your ag supply, your dealerships, equipment dealerships, all your other suppliers. So we're trying to preserve as large and as much agricultural lands as we can.
Even when it goes through our ranking committee, it has to come to you guys, if it's in your county, to get your approval to be put into an easement as well. So you'll see anything that is in your county come through you guys as well.
And then with respect to the 20% from our funding, do you guys have any direction on how we get that into the works and how we provide instructions to?
I would hope that that House Bill 371 would give you some direction, but I'm not positive. I'll have to go through it. But I would imagine it gives your recorder some, at least some direction on it.
There's some things I talked to a person today that I'll be talking to you guys later on that part.
Okay, so takeaways today. We just, we hope and we assume, you probably know and understand the importance of agriculture in your county. And we want you to consider that it's a quality of life. There are a lot of people that want to move here to a rural area. And by preserving agricultural land and agricultural producers and supporting them, you can assure your citizens that when they move here, that it's going to stay like this. And so we're encouraging municipalities to adopt ag-friendly zoning ordinances, and we want you to know that we can be an asset at the Department of Agriculture and Food to help you do the things that you want to do to preserve agriculture in your county. So thanks again for allowing us to be here. We appreciate your time, and if you have any questions, we're happy to answer any questions.
So who's the best person to call when we want to call your office and talk to you or to Kelly or whatever?
We'll leave our cards, and you can call us anytime you want. And that's, you know, we have, like you say, Jim Volket was on the video. He does a lot of great work with the Conservation Division. So we can direct you, you know, according to what your questions are, we can direct you to whoever up here.
We sure appreciate you coming up and spending the time with us. Definitely Morgan County supports UDAF. We've got several employees or former.
Yep.
We've got one in the back of the room here.
Former commissioner here.
My father-in-law worked for UDAF for over 20 years. So definitely, we support what you do and appreciate it and appreciate your time.
We've got some great employees with the building and really want to help support the farmers.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'll leave some, we've got some pamphlets here. I'll just leave them on the back table.
Okay, sounds great.
Keep them in your desk here if you want or if you're reception.
Okay, awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you again. Okay. Farm Bureau, oh, that's you, Debbie. Okay. Discussion Decision, Morgan County Farm Bureau requesting waiver of auditorium rental fee for the Morgan County Farm Bureau meetings.
Yes, most of the time, our board meetings can be held at the Farm Bureau Insurance Office. But a few times a year, we invite more people. We don't fit there. We would like to be able to use the auditorium. We set up ourselves. We take down and we'll take our donut boxes out to the dumpster if necessary. But we would like the waiver, please.
All right, any questions? That will look for a motion on the item.
I move that we allow the Farm Bureau to be able to rent our auditorium without cost.
Second. The motion is second.
Matt.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Debbie. All right, Josh, you're up. A little disappointed you only have two items this week.
I thought you were going to have nine or 10.
All right, first item is Planning Commission. We have two open seats, one for the Mountain Green area and one for the Enterprise area.
That's correct. So Debbie Sessions mentioned that I needed to put this on your agenda for you to take action on either this week or another week to appoint new planning commissioners. We have two open seats. The planning commissioners have said that they would be willing to stay on for a reasonable length of time until we can appoint new members. I emailed you the applications that we've received. We received one application from Mountain Green and one application from Enterprise. I don't know if you want to take action on those two applications and appoint them or if you want to wait for an additional application.
I will say that historically, if we get one or two applicants, we're thrilled. You know, that's kind of a thankless job.
Yeah.
So we don't exactly have people banging down the door to get in.
Yeah.
But I assume we advertise publicly.
It's been on our website, and yeah, we have advertised boards.
Who's leaving?
Gary Ross and Chris Merrily.
So how long have we advertised it on our website for?
Two months, I think about two months.
Two months?
Say if we only got one free cherry in two months, I would suggest we take action on it rather than waiting for more. But if anybody has a.
Well, I'm glad to know the duration of time. The last time we did one, we appointed an existing commissioner to retain the seat, and somebody came in and was upset because we didn't do interviews and all of that. But if we've been advertising for 60 days and we have two applicants and they happen to fit one into each area, I know one of them. I don't know the other.
Well, they both looked like they are good qualified people.
Yeah, I'm familiar with both of them, and both of them have made an effort to be involved in the community, so.
And I'll work with whoever you appoint, so it doesn't matter to me.
So the two applicants for the Mountain Green area was Andrew Phillips, as I recall.
Mm-hmm.
And for Enterprise was Devin Miller, correct?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion on this item?
Make a motion that we approve for the Planning Commission open seats. Devin Miller in the Enterprise area and Andrew Phillips in the Mountain Green area.
I'll second.
The motion is second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you. All right, next item is approval of Rose Hill subdivision, Phase Four, plot amendment number one to divide the existing law into two lots.
Yeah, this plot amendment.
Hold it, this is Joshua Cook, not Josh.
That's right. I thought it was someone different. The first one was my informal personality.
He's here to play now.
Dane Wilkinson asked if we could extend it for another two weeks. He expected his will-served letter either this week or next week. I don't know if you want to push it off another meeting to the first one in May just to be safe, but they've really had a hard time getting their will-served letter for that second plot.
So what's the problem?
Bringing wells online to provide source. They're in the works, the pump houses are in, they're literally waiting for the transformers, which are on order.
Back ordered and stuff, okay.
So are we going to keep pushing this off every two weeks or can we say?
Bring it back when you're ready.
Something like that.
Well, our code does require a valid will-served letter before approval, so.
And we're just saying, should we do it at two weeks or four or?
Oh, I see.
An open timeframe until such time as the will-served letter is received and.
Let's just do it for four, and I guess he can always move it up as long as it's in before then, right?
Or if you'd rather, we don't set a date at all, and I'll just re-notice it for when he gets it, instead of having to keep coming back.
Maybe that's a better.
I'm good with whatever you want me to do, but that might be easier.
So the motion would be to postpone until the applicant is ready to return?
That's right.
At which time, we will re-notice it for county commission.
That's probably the smarter.
Yes, I agree.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we postpone item number four, the Rose Hill subdivision, Phase Four, plot amendment number one, until such time as the applicant has the will-served letter, which it can be rescheduled at the next available meeting opportunity.
I'll second.
We have a motion in the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
If I may add, that was a great presentation about the agricultural land. Another option to preserve agricultural land would be transfer of development rights. So I don't know if that's something you would like to discuss further at a later meeting, but it has been used in other communities.
I would like to.
I think that'd be interesting.
Yeah, I would like to have that as part of our potential that we have in our county. But I know that there's some that may not like that.
Well, that's just another tool in the toolbox, in my perspective.
Yeah, see, some county uses it all the time now, and they used to not have it, and it has made it to where farms get to stay in farming instead of having to sell.
Well, it also provides that farmer or that property owner the opportunity to receive some monetary.
Right.
Value from his property or her property. And then that stays as farmland, and the density is typically transferred to areas that already have the infrastructure to support it.
Right, right.
And the truth is, that's one of the barriers, and they even noted it up there. It's the cost on the acquisition of farmland that's just really difficult. And we see that just from a generational thing. Even if the family doesn't necessarily want to sell, they're forced into doing it because nobody can afford to buy the other one out, you know?
That's right.
But if a developer pays them for their development potential and their rights, and that property automatically enters into a non-developable easement for future, you know, time memorial.
Just have to figure out where your target zones are going to go and where you're going to put the additional density because we certainly have people here that aren't happy to have invincible much density by them.
That's true.
That's right. And they have to stay within the county. They don't get to be transferred elsewhere outside another area.
You can't send it all to Salt Lake County.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to do. Send them there.
I have seen communities create different zones as well. So some zones may be a one-for-one or a one-for-two or a one-for-six, depending on what development's already there or if they have infrastructure. There's a lot of options.
I mean, it's definitely worth exploring as a tool.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Josh. Okay, Commissioner Fackrell.
All right. James is here for that reason. What we've got is I've sent to each one of you the grant that was awarded to us. It was a $30,000 grant to try to get our broadband coverage better throughout the county. And so James is going to talk a little bit about it. We do not have a match that we have to do on this.
Yeah, I read that incorrect. I was skimming through and I saw the 75-25, but that's just payment from that, so.
Yeah, right.
Yes, I think we all have been working on some type of broadband plan at the end of the day. One of the issues we've had is identifying the needs in the county as a whole. The state has a program to help us identify the areas of need, whether they're underserved or there's low data packages or there is a high data package, but we're not meeting it. Maybe the carrier is just not meeting the advertised speeds. But we've had a little bit of a difficulty getting that website slash program used. And then the other issue we've had in the past, and we've looked at several different things, including the RFQ/RFP that we put out for an open network to try to get some interest in the county as a whole. And even if it wasn't from someone laying out all the fiber to every house, at least it was creating a backbone that another company could come and then do last mile or to house service, and we had very little interest in that. So the state, I think, has reasonably determined that that's just not Morgan County's issue. It's many counties. And so they've come up with a connectivity plan. They're really looking at over the next five years of building out. They want a plan from every county within the state so then they can start to prioritize where those dollars go. So I think this is the first step. Commissioner Fackrell put us onto this grant. We applied for it and received the $30,000. And again, it starts with the stakeholder outreach, then goes to a survey data collection, then the speed test data collection, and then has a post-outreach debrief. And the ending product is a plan that's put out by the state requirements for a five-year plan that will go into the state's five-year plan. Really, there's not a whole bunch that you need to do rather than working maybe on several different work groups at any particular time. Again, they haven't lined this out exactly, just doing public outreach and trying to find the very best medians to use to get that information out. If you have this in your pack, which I'm not sure you have, we actually have a budget. Starts with, and all of these dollars are going directly to HROX, which is a company that the state has on their state bid. And they, I'm not even sure if they recommend it, but I think it was more of a preference. I think HROX is doing it in a lot of different counties. But again, there's a project management, stakeholder outreach, survey data collection, speed test, post-outreach, and any technical analysis. And that is a full $30,000. We do want to make sure that the contract, our initial proposal had a March start on it for a five-month process, and we just need to make sure we push that to April, April 15th, the five-month plus. Other than that, I think, we actually were very specific in our meeting with HROX. We wanted outcomes, and so they included an outcome in the contract, outcomes in the contract.
All right, and so.
So, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
I know when we have, I guess you'd call them vendors on state, where we're able to use those vendors that have been.
Yeah, HROX.
embedded.
Yes, sir.
I guess this, to me, reads a little bit like professional services.
Say that one more time.
This reads to me a little bit like professional services. So I guess I just want to make sure that the procurement process that we took to have HROX do this work was done correctly.
Yeah, so we can double-check back with them.
I already know.
But we talked specifically about that. They said they are on the state bid, which allows us just to pick a vendor to use for it rather than putting it out and going outside of.
Right, this just doesn't appear like a vendor at all. It appears more like professional services, that's all.
They are basically, just like Jake said, they are one of those vendors. We could have picked others. We could have taken part of the budget, and we still could take part of the budget and we do it ourselves or we let them do it, and they will, they are, we're not even going to be handling the money. That's what's so interesting, is in this whole thing, they are actually going to be, they're going to be sending the bills directly to the state. And that's what's kind of weird on this whole grant, is we're not even going to see it. They're going to be taking the whole.
Oh, so we're not contracting with them?
Yeah.
Do whatever that.
I mean, we actually are contracting with them. We have to sign the bill, I mean, sign the contract, but as far as it's pass-through money that's going to go, it's not even coming here.
So are they going to take care of all these conditions that I read?
Yes. So the state has very specific conditions, and they actually state that they'll create the plan in compliance with the state connecting Utah. So develop the Morgan County broadband plan according to the standards of connecting Utah and the National Telecommunications and Information Administration. And then they actually have a website connection that you can go look at what those requirements are. And they said that they will be the ones that create the plan and make sure they meet all those specific criteria.
So in this contract, they are the grantee then?
So it's a lot like our IBI contract, to be honest with you, Commissioner Wilson. Our IBI contract, we pick the vendor, so to speak, but WFRC actually paid all of the invoices. And this is almost exactly the same as how WFRC ran our IBI contract for our Mountain Green and our Peterson study.
It's interesting.
Except for we don't have a match.
It's interesting because I think this step is phenomenal, and it should have happened two years ago. But, better late than never.
I mean, not doing my job.
Better late than never. But I think it's a great process, but.
Kind of to answer Commissioner Wilson's question then, no, the county is the grantee, but they handle a lot of the grantees.
Yes.
Requirements of the contract, because that was a question I had, is who is monitoring this? And if they're monitoring it, because they're. this? And if they're monitoring it, because there's very specific reports that have to be submitted, or the state requires the grantee to reimburse.
On condition of reimbursement for the invoice, it would be the state who would check to make sure the conditions were met for the connectivity requirements.
I'm just saying the reporting requirements to the state, the grantee is responsible for sending it in.
We are, or HOROCs?
The grantee is
Which is us.
Which is the county, not HOROCs.
Yeah, so we would be required to review the invoice request to make sure that they've met whatever criteria we have, like, for example, IBI had certain benchmarks they were supposed to hit, the infrastructure, the review, the public outreach, and as they hit those, then I would let Megan from WFRC know that they've hit that benchmark. So we would do the same to make sure they're hitting the benchmarks in conjunction with the state. To be honest with you, what we would do is I would call Rebecca from the state and say, okay, here's what they've submitted. Does this meet your criteria? She would tell me whether or not it did. If it did, then I would go ahead and sign off. If it didn't, then I'd respond back to HOROCs. We need 14B, six little I, it's not included in it. And so that's how we would just review to make sure that they hit all the requirements of the state connectivity.
I think I just heard James say that he was going to take that on.
Yeah, Blaine's already told me that this is mine.
He's the contact person.
Yeah, I am the contact person, so. The other value of this, Commissioner Anderson, is I really feel like this is the benchmark they're using to prioritize projects as federal dollars or state dollars are allotted to broadband expansion, and if we are working with HOROCs, who is doing a number of them, and so they have, I think, continuity through these plans, I think will put us in a much better place when they're prioritizing projects, because they won't have any specific questions on if we're hitting something or missing something. So again, I think using a vendor that they feel very comfortable with is a positive, which is, to be honest with you, one of the reasons we went with IBI, because WFRC was very comfortable with IBI, and we'll eventually have more grants we put through to WFRC, and we'll be using the IBI study to do that, and so I think it positions us well to be better prioritized for those grants. That's all I have to say.
There's no, as I said, there's no way. There's no way you're done.
Okay, any other questions regarding the agreement or grant? I think this is wonderful.
One thing, like James was saying, it is so that we can get other federal grants, because it's coming out. The federal grants are coming out this summer and this fall, and, I mean, they want everybody covered, and we're not covered, even though it says we've only got 6%. 6% of our people are not covered, is what they say, and I say it's 50%. So... And the other, there's a couple of criterias that we have to be aware of. They have to make it to where it's a reasonable INRET. So if we wanted to get satellite, Starlink or something, that's not a reasonable cost. So that's what they've got to try to do, is get it down, the costs are down. And if anybody would like to know, we're having a meeting with these guys, HOROCs, on Friday at 11 o'clock here.
Commissioner Fackrell, I apologize. I didn't open the agreement that you sent us Monday, until yesterday, until now. Sorry about that.
It's all right. So if we sign that agreement tonight...
Do we have a signable copy? What we have here just says draft on it. They provide us with an executable copy?
I thought they had it.
So there's, we were just talking that there's a couple red lines, and because we're not starting March 1st, we're going to see if we can bump everything by a month, and then...
Well, we have a Word version. We could probably update it ourselves and sign it.
Well, can we just do an approval based on your approval?
Well, I think if we update it, the only questions that we were trying to, that we need to follow up on with the state, the June 1st deadline, the September 1st, we're not sure if that's by statute.
That is.
It's by statute.
Yeah, we have to have everything done by a certain date, and so those are different things that we have to have accomplished at those times, because, I mean, I've got a meeting tomorrow morning also with them on this, so it has to be done at certain stages by those dates. So it doesn't matter if it's March 1st or May 1st. It still has to be done by August. Everything has to be done by August.
So worst-case scenario, what if we miss those dates?
Then I'll be in trouble. They'll be called.
We may have to reimburse, because it could potentially be not within the timeframe, and so I think we could still approve the contract, just subject to the statutory date, statutory deadlines
Yeah.
that may be updated if possible.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the local broadband planning grant contract with the Governor's Office of Economic Opportunity, State Contract Number 230630681, subject to adjustments of the dates in the contract as approved by Mr. Ebert and our county attorney.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
Number six needs to be postponed.
Okay.
They just barely closed it, and he's, Syracuse
Getting an agreement together and stuff.
Yeah, he's out of town, so.
Okay, no problem.
And Boyd's out of town, too, so.
You want to make a motion then to postpone to the next meeting?
Yeah. I will make a motion that we postpone number six to ratify the fire truck purchase till our next meeting on?
The 18th.
The 18th of April.
Second.
It's April.
A motion and a second to postpone. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Commissioner Wilson, back to you.
So I've actually had several individuals see this on the agenda and talk to me about it, and I've been mulling this over and thinking about it, too, and I don't know if it's a good idea to do this. So here's my, here's my
Why was it brought up?
Here's my thinking, because someone asked me to bring it up.
Got it.
And so it's $15 for two hours. Not all the employees are going to take advantage of this, and what I don't want to start is, is, well, you know, they get to do that for free, why can't I do this for free? Why can't I use the auditorium for free? Why can't we? And I just don't want to start that. It's like, where do we end with free? So I think we just need to kind of keep it. This is my personal feeling. If you guys differ, I just think we ought to just leave it. I think all of our employees can afford $15 to use the, and we won't start a, something that can't be stopped.
So it's approval of employees to use the gun range for free?
Correct.
Okay.
As one of the benefits of being an employee. That's what
We don't make any money as it is on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't.
It passes money, so.
Just throwing this out there, and I'm not advocating one way or the other, but would there be any reason to suggest that any of our facilities could be rented by our employees for, say, a reduced rate, you know, a half price or something, or is that not worth considering? And I don't know if it matters. I don't know how often they do or anything like that. I just am throwing that out there.
So if we get, if employees get a ticket in the county, can we have that half-reduced too?
Much like a commissioner's?
I can agree with that.
I can see what you're saying, like, where does it stop once you start doing that?
That's my concern.
And I do agree with Commissioner Wilson, too. I mean, benefit of $15 is, I mean, it is a benefit, and that'd be great, but, yeah, I worry that it'd start to domino effect on many other things, but...
What I'm wondering is, is what about those times that it's not used, and it's not scheduled for anything? Could they use it then for free? I mean, because it's unoccupied, not being used. I'm just curious. I don't go and use it, but, you know, I'm just curious.
Well, I guess, there again, it's just so ambiguous that it's just hard to say that, you know? Just if it's not being used, you can use it for free. I don't know.
The question is, you'd have to set parameters, you know, if it's not scheduled out a week, a day, an hour, you know, when?
And the same thing with auditorium and all that stuff. I don't use the gun range, but I'd like to use that. What if it's not being used?
Here's another thought. I know, this is kind of similar, but so Ogden City owns two golf courses. They don't let their employees golf for free, but there are certain circumstances where if they're bringing in, if it's a marketing thing, or, you know, and I think if that comes up, or we say, hey, we want to have a group come up and show them the gun range, and we want to use it for this amount of time, I think that's one thing. I think we can make that work, but...
You know, one thought to that, at that point, we could maybe establish a handful of days a year where we dedicate the gun range
That's not a bad idea.
to employees and say, hey, you know, once a quarter, there's a Saturday or something that employees can go up there and use it, and it's just open to our employees. And it's not single, and they can bring their families or whatever and use it. They'll have to understand that they're going to share it with other employees, potentially, but that might be a thought.
One bird for 40 guns. No, I like that idea.
Just thinking of ways to
That's not a bad idea.
Then it's not just a free-for-all, and you have, you know, certain people, I don't care.
So I know the sheriff's office has done, like, training up there, and my thought would be just given, you know, different defendants. I know my office, we thought, well, maybe we could do some training with the sheriff's office, and maybe if we're coordinating through the sheriff's office to do, like, self-defense type training or just practice, so that if someone is carrying in the building, they're not going to hurt a hostage or a bystander, you know, if it's part of, like, a training, not just for recreation, but office training, maybe that's.
We use all of our facilities for that, right? I would expect you, if we were, well, we have our meetings in here with all of our department heads. We use the auditorium for, so I think that's totally acceptable if we're talking trainings. I didn't understand, I thought this was just talking about private, or an individual using it for their own private use.
And that's probably what it is. I was just throwing that out, that maybe, maybe it doesn't apply here.
And I guess, to that point, we probably ought to set aside some time for training for our own employees, if we want to use the facility for that, too. I'd hate to have it all booked out and not be able to do that.
So the sheriff has a gift card balance that they can use anytime to preserve the range, so for any training, anything like that. And I qualify with the sheriff. They're awesome, so. But they do have the ability to sign up for that anytime they want to reserve it, first come, first served.
Oh, perfect. Okay. So, I don't know. I like the idea of maybe an employee day once a quarter or something, and just say, hey, you can go use it, enjoy it. I don't know if there's any other assets that we have that we could offer to our employees to use as well once in a while, but
Mini excavator.
I was thinking more along the lines of pickleball courts or something.
That would be nice, too.
Do we charge for the pickleball courts?
No.
No, no, you're right. We don't charge.
So, so do we move to postpone it? What do we do?
Well, we probably ought to have some criteria put in place before we agree to something, but maybe we could just tentatively say, yes, we want to proceed with putting together some criteria for something, or no, we don't, and leave it at that.
Okay, I can do that by next meeting.
That work?
What about a yearly, you know, a reduced rate yearly, that they could use it when it's not occupied?
That's another idea.
Just another thought.
Again, there'd have to be some criteria to determine, at what point do we determine it's unoccupied, you know, is it day of, or?
I was thinking, like, for instance, Jeremy gets off of work tonight, and it's not occupied, can he go over there and use it before he heads home?
Yeah, and maybe that is fine. I don't know.
I'm just saying, you know, that could be for our employees, just to try to utilize it a little bit more, is all I'm looking at. And then if he gets over to utilize it, we fix it.
Okay, cool. Shall we make a motion then to postpone this item to a future meeting?
Yeah. I move that we postpone this matter of the use of the gun range till a later date when we have more criteria put together.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Matt, back to you.
This was the hunter safety course man, I can't think of his name now, Pence. Anyway, he volunteers to do the thing for the young man, and they don't charge to do that, so he was wondering if we could get it waived, so.
I don't have an issue with that.
I don't either. As long as they're not paying for profit, I don't mind.
Yep, he's doing, he's committing four nights for free, so.
Make a motion that we waive auditorium fees for the hunter safety classes discussed.
I'll second it.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
That was an I, not a N. I was just a little late.
You just had your delay, because you were remote for a minute there.
That's right.
All right, Julie, over to you.
Okay. After looking into quite a few different ways that other counties and cities do their background checks, and talking to a lot of people, and we found out that Applicant Pro, which we already have, actually has an existing button that can make our life very simple. We already use Applicant Pro. We don't have to pay any extra fees for opening up that part of the portal. We just push a button, and all of the information that's already in there is used to do the background checks, and they charge us every time we push the button, the 40, the 39 bucks. That's a little bit more expensive than some that we could get, but they're not as thorough. They don't do, like, the whole country or worldview of it. They'll do a more simple background check. What I'd like to do is get your approval to go ahead and start this, since there's no cost added. We do have a budget that was set in our budget season for these background checks. I do need to get started, because we have the fire department needs. We hired a gal yesterday. We need to get her done, and the library now has to do background checks starting in July. So if you would approve this, I can still do more research to make sure that we're getting the best price, the best thorough background check, and then also find some ways to do a simpler one for our existing employees, instead of, like the auditor suggested, that we do all of our employees every three years. We could just make a policy where maybe we did all of our employees that deal with money every three years, or whatever you would like to do. I could come back with more thought on that sometime, but right now I'd like to just get this going, so I can take care of immediate needs, and I just pay per, and then have you tell me if you want me to do our existing employees that have never had a background check.
I have a question. Are there were extra costs in there? What?
Those are, you're going to add other aspects. The 39 covers everything that's listed for that fee, and so that's all we would do, and we wouldn't have to add any extras, because we don't have other criteria that makes us pull in extra fees.
So if we have to do a drug test, it's going to be that extra amount?
No, because we do the drug tests right here in town, and they're 19.
Okay.
So those would be completely separate, and we don't need to go to this one and do a more extensive one. We just want to use the background
Background check.
But I think we do want an extensive background. I don't, I just want to, I pay more for my apartments. I think it's worth it.
Well, $40 for 40 employees is $1,500. That's not a lot of money, $1,600. That's not a lot of money at all.
I don't know if we, Julie, how many employees do we have?
50 full-time.
50 full-time, but part-time, we've got
We still have to do the part-time.
Another 20 or so, right?
Yeah.
So 70-ish?
And then the recreation department does it her own way, so I wouldn't even think about including her in our budget that we created.
And why wouldn't we want to have the recreation department also?
She does it different. She has, she has got a way to do it cheaper or free, because she doesn't have to look for everything. She's looking for juvenile issues, I think.
Pedophilia.
Let's, I can talk to her, but hers is completely different than what we would be doing.
Whatever's required by recreational department for the state.
And the coaches have to go through more extensive, but not the kids. And so she just does something, but I think it might even
Why don't we give the coaches that she acts on?
I'm not sure, but she, but she takes care of her own.
So, so Jeremy, what were you mentioning there?
Oh, I just said that any of the staff that can enter the, any of the police area or the IT department, we're all background checked through ZDAS every year, which you can just get that release from point.
Oh, okay.
We don't have to do all of, so that actually saves us quite a few employees, doesn't it?
That takes us down to maybe twenty, twenty-one.
And it's extremely good background checks.
I'd imagine.
FBI, they.
I'd imagine.
Thank you.
Okay, cool.
Mr. Chair, I'm making a motion that we approve the agreement with applicant pro, an existing software to add background checks to our portal for hiring, and I will further recommend or make a motion that we do background checks on all full-time employees with respect to which we do not have current background checks.
And I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion, a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
So I assume that would come from the fund balance, I suppose.
Well, we did have a small fund, I don't know how much did we put in that?
I have three thousand in my HR budget for this.
Oh, that'll probably cover the whole thing. If for some reason we end up over that, just let us know and we'll talk about transferring some funds.
Yeah, the fire department is wanting to be more actively doing it for their people and the library now will be more actively doing it if they have people, if they have any people constantly doing it, so, and then the custodial family hired today is the one that I want to get done, because she gets to go onto all of them, most of them not yet.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right, we made it through. Commissioner comments?
Could I, could I have a break before Blaine takes off?
Oh, yeah. We'll have a quick break before Commissioner comments.
I'm going to make sure it's long tonight now. You just made it. Got to quit drinking so much. We are going into executive session, right?
Yes.
Close second, okay. Because I got a few items.
Huh?
Just let me know where it's at, okay?
Wow, forty percent of the beef, you know what that's going to do to beef prices?
Oh, it's going to be terrible, it's going to be awful. Yep. I will say, the good news is, we called to get a beef butchered last week and they've got us on the schedule for the end of April, which is way better than.
That's weird, so who's that through?
That's champions.
Champions, oh, okay, that's surprising.
Yeah, I was, I was surprised.
Are they coming out to kill it too?
Yeah, and they're going to come.
They do a good job, so I really like them. These guys blew me right off. I, I had to find champion, I'm not going to leave them now.
You're, when you're a year out, I mean, how do you do that with an animal that, you know, to feed it that much longer?
No.
It's not as good and you put a lot more money into it.
Yeah, and, and the thing that they're building down there is more a, down in the Nephi area, is more of a USDA inspected plant or a Utah plant that will.
Yeah, that's big producers, not.
Well, no, it's going to be a small people too, but it's not going to be custom, it's going to be more that goes to the stores, the retails and all that kind of stuff and that's, because my next date's not until June of next year, still for USDA inspecting, so.
June of next year?
Next year. Yeah, that's for USDA, because there's only two plants in the state that's USDA inspected all the way.
Okay, Commissioner comments, Commissioner Anderson.
We're not starting with back road?
Nope, she's, she's been moving this up.
You're first on the list, she's been moving the list around.
Oh, yeah.
Great idea, great idea.
Keep things interesting.
So, uh, let's see. Um, just so you guys aware on that email, I know Lydia copied all of you guys today, Blaine asked a little bit about it, it was really just, uh, we need to get the funds and even approve the funds to do this work out of, out of the pickleball courts, whatever we're going to do, we don't know that yet until we get the funds. Part of the process, when she gets the funds and starts the design, is to delineate a wetland, so she was putting a few carts before a horse and I just told her, let's, let's ease up a little bit and wait until we see what funds we get and, and what we need to do there, so I discussed that with her and kind of put that to bed pretty quick. Um, I would give you an update from our Weaver Basin Board meeting last week, but I think Austin pretty much covered everything. Um, it reminded me of my waters users conference about three weeks ago, we, we've determined that we have water, after three meeting, three days of meetings, we determined that there's water out there, so.
That's a good thing.
Well, the governor says that we might end up.
It's going to go from one to the extreme to the other.
We might actually have to use the pumps this year. There's a chance.
But I, I, I will say, I, I think.
You'd have to fill the entire basin.
They were, they were, he says there's a chance we might.
Everything I've heard.
I've heard we'd have to have like seven to ten years like this to fill.
So if you go, if you go on their website, there's actually a gauge that you can see what, how it'll raise and where it needs to go. From what I've understood, we've risen about two feet, like they said on the news so far. The estimated is another three, two, five feet, but I think we need a good ten feet to get to the flood stage.
Seven or twelve.
I, I don't think we're going to, from everything I've understood, I don't think we're going to reach that.
That was just a week ago.
So.
Two weeks ago.
I don't know, so, Croydon Bridge has been taking up Commissioner Newton and I's time quite a bit recently, but I, I don't know if you just want to wait till we have our call session to go into discussion on that or what we want to say publicly yet. Um, well, I guess publicly, we, we definitely need to say that, um, they're looking at options right now, um, as far as a temporary bridge, as far as what we need to do on that back road, um, I don't even know if anybody will even watch this or listen in, but it is, I mean, Commissioner Newton drives it daily, um, it is an absolute disaster and mess and both of us have been pushing quite hard with everybody involved, in particular UDOT, um, but we're really pushing hard on what the alternatives are and what we need to do there. Um, I don't even know if I can say much more than that, but I'll, when it gets to Commissioner Newton, he can add whatever he wants to add to that.
Have you talked to the legislature at all on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, I can't think, I mean, there's a lot going on, but I can't think of anything I need to bring up in comments for now, so.
So was Stuart able to light any fires? He seemed pretty concerned about it.
Not really, um, I mean, Stuart Adams, when we talked to him about it, when we went down to the legislature, we sat down with Stuart and I, I gave him the spiel that I've given to every legislator and, and everybody that'll listen. Jared and I did meet with, um, the region one director and, and.
The manager.
And manager, what, two weeks ago?
Mm-hmm.
At the project, we looked at the project, we stood out there and talked about it, we purposely met at the project on the Croydon side because we wanted them to drive the back road and experience the joy that is. And I sent, I don't know if you guys got them, but I sent a text with some pictures of that back road last week.
Yeah.
To all of you, just so you could kind of see what we're, what we're dealing with. It, it's.
You texted or emailed us?
Texts.
And it, it's really not a, in my opinion anyways, it's not a matter of how much pressure can be put on right now versus we're in not a very good spot, so how do we move forward?
Yeah, the, the water has really put us in a, in a really bad situation. On a normal year, flows are much lower than this, much, much lower.
It never did, it didn't break.
If they're already releasing them early, then you've already got high water.
It, it didn't break, I want, and this is echo, I don't think they went higher than six hundred CFS all of last year. Currently, I think it's twelve sixty and they project that to be flowing at that rate for three months. He said several months, I'm guessing about three months, but to be at that high of a rate and we've got all Lost Creek that's coming down, it's just, and the reason why they have to do that is because we gave the contractor two months' worth of time by, by holding those flows down and they still didn't get done. March fifteenth was the date that the bridge, not temporary, the bridge was supposed to be open and operational.
They were supposed to be out of the river the end of December, first of January.
Yeah.
They went out of the river, well, they're not actually out of the river now. They are now because they had to pull out, but they're not done with the work that needed to be done. So, the drilling is done and that's, that's done and, and pylons are in and that company, that subcontractor is gone now, and now it's just the, the main contractor has to finish their work. Um, but given the amount of water that we have, we're probably talking the fall before they get back or late summer. That's the concern at this point.
And, and the concern of the monies of that back road to even keep it operational and to fix it, and then the monies of if there's going to be a temp bridge or not, it's just, and by, by contract with UDOT, any change orders above and beyond the original contract, the contract states it's a responsibility of the county, but, um, we're definitely not interested in that, and I know UDOT has said, hey, we're.
That should only be if they kept their part of the agreement.
So they, UDOT does recognize that and they, they are going to be working with us, but.
What we're really concerned about is the financial aspect, the, the wear and tear that's going on that road and, and frankly, the, um, I don't know if I'll say the, the mental aspect of it, but, but we've, we've got residents and a business up there, the biggest taxpayer business in Morgan County, I might add, that have been driving this road for now five plus months, um, and it's taking a, a real wear on people. Tempers are short, um, I've had a couple of very unhappy folks that I've spent several hours with over the last little while, either on phone calls or on my doorstep.
Last night?
Um, Saturday night.
Saturday night.
Saturday night, I spent an hour standing on the porch talking to a very unhappy neighbor. Um, and I can't, I can't say that any of their concerns, I mean, all of them are very valid and they're justified in feeling that way, but we've got some very unhappy folks about the current situation and granted, it, it's a small population that lives up there compared to the rest of the population of the county, there's only about two hundred and fifty people that live in Croydon, but the, the time that this has taken and, and now looking forward, what it's going to take, um, you know, and it's, it's a financial burden on folks, it costs me twice as much to come back and forth to Morgan in time and money and the wear and tear on vehicles and such, there's a lot of people really unhappy about it, so, um, we're going to do our best to work with UDOT and the contractor and try to get things done, but it's definitely not what we expected at the beginning of this project and we're quite unhappy with where we're at now, so. I kind of went on a rant there, do you have?
Oh, no, no.
So the back road, so assuming that there's not a good temporary bridging solution, then are we talking about accelerating the timeline to redo the back road?
Well.
And would you do that by repaving it or would we do that by doing?
Reconstruct some sections.
Yeah, there's some sections where the road is completely gone and would need to be reconstructed.
But they'll beat it, they'll. That's what I'm wondering, should we do, should we do like a, um, a road, temporary road base thing that you know you're going to tear out because you can, you've got all that extra diesel loading on it.
We've got about, what, two and a half miles of road in Morgan County and the rest of that stretches in Summit County, so we're going to have to have some coordination with Summit County to, to see what that looks like and, you know, from my perspective, any damage that occurred to that road after March fifteenth is really on the contractor and, and UDOT who's managing that project. I mean, that's their responsibility because anything done after that shouldn't have been, you know, and it's not normal wear and tear at this point because the road is, is damaged to the point where it's just, you know, I mean, there are literally places there where you're, you're dodging six potholes at once and if you pass another vehicle, you're off in the dirt, there's another stretch that is completely dirt for, and it's, it's getting longer and longer, it's several hundred feet, it's mud right now, but I mean, it's, it's bad.
And they grade it and by the end of the day, I mean, there's a hundred weighted trucks going over this thing, so it's just, and that's what I worry about Commissioner McConnell with your comment on the, the fixes, because I, I worry if it's a Band-Aid, that the Band-Aid will just blow up within a few days if, if, depending on the Band-Aid, I just.
Brett's been up there patching potholes just on our side, and the potholes on the Morgan County side, the road on the Morgan County side is way better than the road on the Summit County side right now, but he was up there one day, this was several weeks ago, they patched those potholes around noon and I went by at three PM and they were empty. That, three hours later, with those trucks going over it, it just knocked the, the asphalt right back out. Now granted, this is not the kind of weather to be doing pothole patching, but, you know, and, and once it warms up enough and we can dry it out, we can get some decent patches in there and maybe some greater overlays to try to keep the road together. We do intend and have plans to shoulder the road better because the other problem we're having is that if you have two, because these are, these are big trucks and they're, they're pulling doubles, so there are two trailers, and if two of them try to pass, especially on any corners, they're off the road by quite a long ways in some places, two plus feet, and so what's happened is it's gotten soft and now we've got ditches this wide and that deep on the side of the road where the rear trailer is drug through a ditch going around a corner, so we're going to have to re-shoulder with some big material to keep that from further falling apart because you get that ditch and then it fills with water and then it softens the edge of the road and the truck goes over and the, the road just buckles under, it's, it's, there's even spots now though, right in the middle of the road, it's just buckling from, from the moisture, so, and as this water bleeds off and the, and the groundwater levels rise as they will, we're going to see more buckling of the road, so.
Were we going to have a call session?
Yes.
Yep, yeah, that's all I got then.
Okay, that's all I have right now too. Commissioner McConnell?
One other question I have for Jared. Did we find out anything about the Weaver Basin impact fee?
So I got him to put the actual, I was talking with another resident a little bit earlier today, but I got him to put the actual impact fee, um, online because in the past we couldn't even read it, so it's online to read right now, and then I'm currently in discussions back and forth on, um, the legality of tying some of the required impact fees to their infrastructure.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's one of those, it's, it's hard because it's one of those things where you're, you're asking for an impact fee on something that there doesn't appear to be an impact on many miles away, so we're, we're working through that, but yes, I'm, I'm currently working on it.
Okay, thanks.
Nothing for me.
Commissioner Fackrel?
Just to report. I attended the JPAC meeting the other day. And they basically went through some of the different projects or things that passed by the legis, legislator, legislature. And one of their big accomplishments that they were talking about was the ATIF, that Active Transportation Infrastructure Bill.
Trails?
Trails. Active Transportation.
Sorry, I meant Active Transportation.
And they were talking that, and we need to know, I need to know, is on the highway down in Mountain Green, going up to the side of the highway, is that a state property?
Where?
Where the, where the trail is.
I don't know what the right-of-way limit is along there.
It's state road. It's highly likely that it is, because it is a state road.
It's a state road.
If so, then they will, in this fund, we can, we can actually ask for money now to take care of the maintenance on that road, I mean, on that trail, so.
When you say take care, do they pay us to maintain and operate the trail?
Whatever, whatever we ask them to do.
They'll, they'll give it the money to us, or they'll do the work?
They'll, either they will do the work or they will give it to us to take care of it. Either way, it will get taken, taken care of. So anything that is our own county trails, it's not gonna happen.
Well, this is, this is state.
Right, but that's state, and so that was one of the things that, I mean, I know that the trail is not maintained at all. It's like having a dirt trail, so, anyway. Then there was also talk about rural transit, and there, there's discussion going on on that. And when we put in the interchange, that there might be something that has to do with trails. Tran, I mean, transfer, transit, so anyway, that's something to think about. Also. We had a RPO, we started the RPO just last week. And for everybody's information, our meetings are gonna be held every third Wednesday at four o'clock. And one of the things that they are looking at, since we already have it in our county, and that is the Morgan de Parlay Singy Byway. And we need to be involved in, in being on their committee, or on the committee to be able to maintain that and put up signage and all those kinds of things, just so you're aware, okay? And I figured I'd do that since it's under tourism and economic development. Also, the UDOT is, I'm having a meeting with them, and I know you guys are in constant contact with them, but I'm having a meeting with them on the 24th at 3:30 here. As far as I understand, you might be down there, they haven't told me a location yet, you're welcome to join me. And that's just like an annual, or not an annual, every quarter, every six months, they didn't say when. Just a normal meeting with them, like I have a meeting with the WFRC. That will be another meeting that we just discuss our needs and what we want to try to accomplish with UDOT, and that's with Rob White.
That's what day?
On the 24th.
What time?
At 3:30.
Where?
That's the part I don't know yet.
Can we find that out and just get an invite sent out?
Yeah, as soon as I find out when, where it's at, then we, then we will. Okay. Oh, another one. This is another item that is coming up, sorry, Matt, you're right, it is taking a long time.
Oh, I'm used to it, that's why we use the restroom before.
Discussion with, on last, I don't remember which day it was, I don't have it written down, must be, it was, it was the 30th. The UAC and NACO and, well, it's not them, it's actually the US, US Department of something, I can't, I didn't write that down. Anyway, has to do with the Energy Block Grant, that they are funding, the state has already funded the big cities with this funding, but. We have gone to bat for the rural counties, and the rural counties now. It's basically, they are trying to make it to where if by the end of April.
This company has gone to bat for rural companies, is that what you're saying?
This company, UAC?
I don't know, you said we have gone to bat.
We.
Who's we?
I was in on the conversation with them, okay? And Zeke from UAC was the one presenting this information for us. We, as a county, need to do a pre-application by the 28th of April, that is to do with allowing homeowners in this county. To apply for a $5,000 grant to put in insulation to help with energy costs. So that way we can cut back on some costs or whatever, and they recognize that we have older homes in this area, and they are also doing it on new construction. So if we are interested in doing it, as far as how we're gonna get that to where it can be run, it's gonna be kind of like the CARES money in a way. Uh, and in fact, it is gonna be like that, where instead of the, being monitored by the county, we will put into, well, it's in pre-discussion how we're gonna do it. But it may go to UAC for our county, so that way there, if Brett, for instance, Matt had a home that he needs to have, or a business that needs to have insulation put in it. There would not be a conflict of us saying that yes, Matt can have it, before it went to somebody else in the county. As far as the millions, I don't know exactly how much millions it was, it was Senate Bill 188. And we have to have a pre, pre-information checklist taken care of by April 28th, and I'm working on that. So I'll bring that to you at the next meeting. And then the state application will be due July 31st, and then we won't get the monies until January. So it's still a year out, but we have to do all this stuff now, so that way we can get funding for it for later.
So you're saying somebody else will manage the program?
That's a potential, it's not really been decided by the state. What they wanted to do was the state just says, well, we'll give it to the, whoever applies, and then the Rural County Association, or the USAC within the rural counties. Says, no, we need it in our counties, we need it specifically for our counties, and it can't all just go to the metropolitan areas. So that's why we have some money available for that program, okay?
I hope they'll manage it, because I don't want to manage it.
Yeah, and that's what I'm hoping too.
Yeah, if it's only $5,000 a, a household, that's a lot of, lot of management.
Yeah, so, so anyway, that was, that was one of those, and then of course, I'll find out about the grant writer stuff for us and any of those other things on ARPA. And then the rest is for the next meeting.
Okay.
I don't know if the assessor's map is accurate, but if you look at that right-of-way, that trails within right-of-way as shown on the assessor's map.
So it is probably.
UDOT.
Okay, what is that highway, 167, 197?
Old.
Yeah, I was gonna say, it's, it's old Lincoln Highway to me, but.
Yeah, okay, I agree, but I need to have a number.
Just look up, UDOT has numbers on their highways on their website, it's pretty, pretty simple to get to, I could get to it probably before our close session actually, but.
Okay.
It's just called Old Highway I rode on.
Yeah, that's what I thought, it's old Lincoln Highway.
Okay, Commissioner Wilson?
I guess I only have really one thing, and that's maybe some advice from you guys on how I should handle the Mini-X situation. They, they're giving us $70,000 to buy a Mini-X. But. The, the political side of things is that we don't, can't ever seem to stay within a budget in that department. Because we, we want the biggest and the best and the greatest and the trailer to pull it, and da, 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 you know? So, hey, we're getting 70, and instead of looking at it like I do as a business owner and saying, great, what can I get for $70,000? We just get the very, very best and say, I need another 20, you know? And that makes it sound like a good deal, because we're getting the 70, but we've got the biggest Mini-X that we can get and all the accessories for it and a trailer to pull it on too. And, and I don't, I don't like that personally. I feel like we should stay, if they're gonna give us $70,000, let's.
Stay within the 70.
But.
That might mean buying a used piece of equipment, and that's probably not a terrible thing.
Waste, you know? And we're in a flood crisis, so let's get all we can, and I hate that, you know, I just wanna. So unless you guys teach me differently, that's my approach, they didn't want to get really a second bid and I, because Wheeler's is, is a state contractor and they can just buy from Wheeler's and. I asked them to please get a, at least a second bid for a Mini-X and so.
So they, they already went to a bid? And it was 90, is that what you're saying?
They never told me the, the bid, I just said, you know what, we have trailers, we have till-bed trailers now, we don't need to have it all set up so the 550 has a trailer with a Mini-X sitting on it, ready to go, you know? We can transfer a Mini-X from trailer to trailer.
Yeah, I don't think, I didn't hear them talk about a trailer a whole lot, just the Mini-X, so.
This was in my conversation with them, but, so anyway.
So we don't know what they're proposing in terms of cost, but, I, I mean.
I just know.
I don't disagree, we don't wanna.
I was getting warmed up.
We don't have a budget right now for an extra amount on top of that, I mean, getting that piece of equipment and.
Well, he wanted to take it out of the flood fund, but our flood fund is gonna go away really fast.
It might.
If we keep, I mean, I saw $850 waiters, you know, it goes away really fast.
Do we know what we have in that flood fund?
Well, we started with eight, I think, didn't we?
Eight what, 800,000? No, it wasn't that high.
I was thinking it was like.
900 plus, wouldn't it, 900?
Is that the one, which one are you talking about?
It's about 84 fund.
The extra for me.
84, no, that was.
That's only 107, 107, let's see, we had two, 279,000, we've used 100 and.
But we didn't actually use that, did you know that? It never got transferred out.
Oh, okay. Then.
It ended up just coming out of the rest of the budget, never, that money never got transferred out.
Okay, so we.
So it's still at the original amount, which is what, 270?
279.
I guess what I'm saying is, I don't, I don't want to just sit and, I, this could, this could happen again next year, you know?
Yeah, and we could have a lot more expenses than we realize.
But we, we also need to be conscientious of the money that our citizens have.
167, mine.
Is what?
167.
That's what we have left?
State Road 167.
State Road, thank you. I didn't know what you were talking about.
Talk about the buddy too.
Okay.
Okay. You all right if I just?
I don't miss a thing. A little bit.
I'll trust your judgment on it.
Yeah.
Use your judgment.
Okay. I mean, I agree with the, the ditch digger and stuff like that, I, I understand we need some of those accessories, but.
They're trying to be like bigger cities.
Side, what I don't, what I don't want to do is say, hey, we don't want to go 10 grand over or 15 grand over versus not using the 70 grand at all. That's also kind of a hard pill to swallow, where if they're gonna give us 70, we, we really ought to use it.
Oh, absolutely, I agree. Yeah, we've been wanting Mini-X anyway, but.
Yeah, and if, if we're talking a, a small amount over, I think that's one thing, if we're talking another, you know, 30% more, that's, that's a different story, right? If we're talking 10% more, that's.
Yeah, and Austin was talking to me, and he says it might be $40,000 over for a trailer, and I thought, that's a pretty big trailer, isn't it? I don't know, you guys buy trailers, I don't.
I don't know what size Mini-X you're talking, but.
Sounds to me like we need a backhoe.
Just below, it's barely able to be called a Mini-X.
Oh, so it's a big one.
It's that big?
Why do we need one that big?
I thought the intent was to get a small one, because we already have a, we already have a trackhoe.
Yeah.
I thought the intent was to get a smaller one so that we'd get into places that we couldn't get with the.
Okay, well, we'll have that discussion, so.
Okay.
Okay.
All right?
Do you mind if I ask about the RDA board meeting, if the 4:15 time works for next meeting or four o'clock? I don't know how much time you want to set aside, they were thinking maybe it'd be 30 minutes. But usually when I hear 30, I think 45 or.
We've been starting work sessions at four, today we start at 4:30, I don't, I don't know. I'd rather give a little extra time than not enough if there's questions and stuff.
They said 30 minutes, and I just thought, well, maybe we could add another 15, so I don't know that we'd need to do four unless maybe there's another item that could be as backup if we end in a half hour.
So let's just start at four.
Just start at four, and then it's easier to remember that start timing for 15.
Yeah.
Okay.
15 minutes isn't gonna make a lot of difference.
Thanks.
We've got plenty of other things we could discuss in an administrative setting.
Yeah, like ARPA.
A work session thing for April 18th?
Yeah.
Well, it's, it'll be a work session, it'll be a.
I'll work with you on that, because it's a separate.
It's a separate meeting, we're convening as an RDA board.
Yeah. So I'll work with you to make sure we notice it correctly.
And that's all of us.
Um, I would like to ask that we go into a closed session to discuss potential litigation.
And property.
And purchase or disposition of real property. So is that a motion you're making?
Uh, yeah, that's my motion.
That's what I thought.
A second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, it's a roll call vote, Commissioner Fackrel. Commissioner McConnell?
Aye.
I vote aye, Commissioner Anderson?
Aye.
And Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Motion passes, we will move into executive session, and it is anticipated.